At this dance, we do have all board members present. We'll begin the night first with an invocation from Kate Carroll followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, we thank you for this day and the just need and benefits you have given to us each and every day. And we pray as we go forward that you would look out over the children of this school system, the staff, the administration. We pray for a good school year, that children would learn and retain. And we just ask for guidance as we go through this meeting. Christ in heaven, amen.
Please don't hand the pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America, to the Lord, to which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we enter into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318, 11A136, to prevent the disclosure and confidential personnel files under General Statute 115C-321, to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee, to prevent the disclosure of confidential student records under General Statute 115C-402, to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege in the handling of FB buying through parents, LB and KB, case number 23EDC-03634, and LM versus Johnston County Board of Education.
All right, that is, I have a motion. I want to entertain a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call off the vote. All those in favor for entering closed session, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seven oh, thank you. We're now in closed session.
We have a lot of reasons to celebrate while we're here. So, we're going to move forward with our, our open session and I will ask Caitlin if she would. Excuse me? Okay.
After sitting from our last board meeting or meeting before last for over 30 years, Coach Earl has been on the soccer field coaching, supporting and building relationships with students and players throughout Johnston County schools. The school administration and booster club requests the naming of Smithfield Soccer Field to be Earl Merritt Field. Hearing no concerns over the past two months, we ask that the Board of Education approve the naming of Smithfield Selma Soccer Field as Earl Merritt Field.
I am proud to say that this is an action item for the Board of Education, so I will entertain a motion. A motion by Mr. Donovan and second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote to name the soccer field at Smithfield Selma High School, the Earl Merritt Field. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank y'all. Mr. Merritt? Just give you a few moments to just say a few things.
Well, it's been my pleasure for about 30 years. I have been benefited more than they have, the relationships that I have made with the kids and with the wonderful people that you've had as teachers and as coaches. You've got a great one there, Pablo Jimenez. And I thank you all for the opportunity to do it. Thank you. This is quite, this is quite an honor.
Well, we congratulate you and your wife, Etta. Etta served our school district for many, many years and your family is here. If your family would stand, those that are here to represent, we'd just like to say thanks. It is, it's great when a school system can recognize those people and we have a lot of you sitting and standing in this room tonight who have committed your lives to serving other people. And Earl Merritt has set the bar high for residents of Johnston County. As former players know, as family members know, he's set the bar very high for when you make a commitment, you're, you're making a full commitment. And you have changed the lives of young people. I cannot imagine how much of your own financial things that you have provided for our students. No one knows about those things, but we know, we know who does know. And we just appreciate so much. You did it for all the right reasons. And so, what a great night to honor someone like this. Again, Earl, I'm, I can't thank you enough. And you too, Etta, for sharing him. If we will now move on to the JCC. We have a wonderful partnership with JCC, so I will call on, I believe, thank you, Earl, Dr. Lindquist and I believe Mr. Williams is here as well, one of our Board of Trustees representatives. So, please feel free to come up.
I've got another one out in the wings, too.
Okay. I'll let you introduce them, but we're glad to have you.
Thank you, thank you. And last time I visited you, I was able to share some, some news about the Johnston County Commissioners' Promise. Happy to report back to you that about 700 students are taking advantage of that this year. It's amazing for us. So, a large part of the reason why our enrollment this semester is at its historic numbers. Have three members of my Board of Trustees with me. They're on the Education Committee. I'm sure you all know them, but Tommy Williams is here, Reed Williams, who you guys just appointed here very, very recently to the Board, and Antoine Whitby. So, I thank them all for being here to help represent the college. I gave you all just a little, very, very brief outline of some of the things that we do in partnership with you. The first page of that talks about the way that Career and College Promise enrollments have been going at the college in the past 11 years. And you can see that the enrollments are robust and they show no signs of abating. In 2013, we had 556 students. We have over 1,600 at this point. So, those are, those are very strong numbers. This fall, that's the second page, we have almost 300 in the early college academy. The CTLA has 165. And the Career and College Promise program is 1,036. So, the total JCPS cohort this semester is 1,489. So, if we, you know, we've got 4,800 students this fall, you do the math. This is a significant part of what makes JCC the institution it is. And we are delighted to have them. What do most of the students take when they, when they're with us? The list of most popular courses comes next. I was surprised that Spanish was at the top of the list. I thought math would be the most popular class. That's a joke. Math is never the most popular class. But what you see here is the core of the transfer curriculum. So, these students are going to be well positioned, whether they stay at Johnston Community College or whether they transfer as soon as they graduate from you, to move on to the four-year college of their choice. So, we do a good job of that. This doesn't surprise me, but it might surprise you. The demographics of Johnston County tend to be almost exclusively, almost even with male and female. But college students are strikingly more female than male. That's true nationally, too. So, this, you know, we're not special here. But one of the things that I think is incumbent upon us to work on as an institution and something we'll work on in partnership with you, is to try to encourage more males to come to higher education. Females have gotten the memo, but some of the males need to, need to do that. And then finally, I thought this would be most interesting to you as you look to see how this program expands into all of your high schools. We have here a chart that shows you the enrollment in, by Johnston County Public Schools for each of the high schools in all of our programs. So, this I think would be something would be good for you and your team to look at in more detail, to see if there are some areas where we might improve things. And if, if there's things we can do, we'd be happy to do them for you and with you. So, thank you very much. And if you have any questions, I would, I would be happy to answer them. And if not, I just want to say that we are, we are delighted with the partnership and we look, we look forward to strengthening it in years to come.
Thank you so much. Any questions? We just so greatly, Mr. Whitby, Mr. Williams, Mr. Williams, we thank y'all. We thank you so much for your care and concern for our school district and your, obviously, your work for the community college. And the Commissioners' Promise that you're talking about, we want everyone to know about that. The opportunity for residents of Johnston County, if you graduate from our high schools, to attend your school tuition-free. That's a wonderful opportunity. So, we continue to want to push that for our students for further education, but we thank you.
I thank you. And I, we are, we're making Commissioner Lottar a little nervous with how many students we're getting, so.
Well, we want them to spend a lot of money.
I'm all about making them sweat, so please help.
And I'm sure they don't mind when it, when we're talking about the further education of young people.
This is, this is the best money we're spending in the county right now.
Yeah, this is giving young people the tools to be successful.
It is indeed. Thank you very much for inviting us. Thank you very much for inviting us.
Okay, Ms. Fur, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun, didn't I?
Great. Up next, we're going to have our special recognitions for this evening. Um, and we'll start off with our character education. So, if you are a parent of a student who is being recognized for character education, this is your boardroom. You are free to move around. If you want to get photos, you can come behind the board. You can move around and do whatever you would like to get pictures, and we really truly mean that. Please don't go crane, you can, Mommy can come behind and get your picture, I promise. So, feel free to do that now. So, if you're a student who is here to be recognized for character ed, if you will come stand next to me, that would be wonderful. Thank you. All right, and when I say your name, if you will raise your hand, and then when we're finished, we'll have you go through and shake hands, okay? All right, each month, the Johnston County Board of Education recognizes students who have exemplified good character in their school. We'll recognize each student and then have them come around and shake our board members' hands at the end. First, uh, we have Leslie Sanchez Gomez, a student at Cleveland Elementary where Dr. Ryan Yule is principal, and I believe we are recognizing her virtually this evening. Leslie is being recognized for demonstrating self-discipline. Due to having recently immigrated from Honduras with her family, Leslie knew very limited English. Being in a new country, home, and school presented many obstacles, including learning a foreign language, being around a lot of unfamiliar people, adapting to a new culture, and learning new practices not only in school, but in the community. Even though she has faced many challenges, she has shown so much self-discipline and commitment to learning English, actively participating in school, building relationships with school staff, and making friends. Her teachers could not be more proud of her determination and success. Through it all, she has remained motivated to grow both academically and socially. Most of all, she has done this with a positive attitude and smile every single day. Congratulations, Leslie. Next is Mr. Talon Brown, a senior at Cleveland High School where Ms. Genesal's here as principal. Talon is being recognized for demonstrating perseverance. While on his path to success, he has faced many challenges. However, he has continued to push himself, both academically and athletically. He has maintained a high grade point average while taking challenging courses. He has never wavered in his determination to achieve his goals. He serves as Student Council President this year. Talon shows lots of initiative daily as he is always reaching out to other students and teachers. He was a member of the Rams varsity basketball team last year and worked hard to perform at his best of abilities at all times. His commitment to stay focused and resilient has allowed him to achieve successes as a student at Cleveland High School. He embodies the essence of perseverance, proving that with the right mindset and determination, you can conquer anything life throws your way. Congratulations, Talon. We told him it was going to be a sure thing that he was either going to get into A and T or Central next year. Right? That's his goal, so y'all channel that for Talon for me. I told you, you had, you had two votes for Central in this room, right? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Central, Central and Central, two votes. Next is Aiden Struve, a eighth-grade student at, uh, Cleveland Middle, who we're also recognizing virtually, where Ms. Shanitra Mangum is principal. Aiden is being recognized for demonstrating compassion. He possesses the remarkable ability to treat everyone with equal consideration and care. Aiden's unwavering commitment to ensuring no one feels excluded is genuinely commendable. He extends an organic welcoming and helping hand to his peers. Additionally, honesty and trustworthiness are pillars of his character. When entrusted with a task, you can rest assured that it will be completed meticulously and precisely. Aiden does not hastily assign blame, but approaches situations with a balanced perspective. His belief in giving everyone a fair chance and advocating for equal opportunities is commendable. He firmly believes in equal access and ensuring no one is unfairly disadvantaged. His unwavering dedication to these values makes him a remarkable individual who fosters fairness, compassion, and inclusivity in every aspect of life. Next, we have Harper Benson, a fifth-grade student from Palenta Elementary where Ms. Tammy Poland is principal. Harper is being recognized for demonstrating compassion. She is new to Palenta this year and has already made quite a big impact on her teachers and peers. She already shines the school's core value of compassion through her kindness and caring demeanor. She is always willing to help and looks for ways to encourage others. Even though she is new to Palenta this year, she has stepped up to help a student who came after the year started. She was not asked to do this, but took it upon herself as she saw the need of another individual. She asks daily what she can do to help her teachers in the classroom to lighten their load. She is respectful and polite, and she interacts with all around her. Congratulations, Harper. Next is Mr. Tyler Hyman, a seventh-grade student at Swift Creek Middle School where Dr. Carrie Evans is principal. He is being recognized for demonstrating compassion. From the moment Taylor joined Swift Creek Middle, he has demonstrated many positive character traits, from respect to perseverance to compassion. He shows compassion to classmates during group activities by including others that may not have a partner. He demonstrates compassion for those struggling with classwork by offering assistance and is always willing to help a friend in a bind. If something is dropped in the band room, he is the first to volunteer to help and maintains a positive outlook and loves to be in the classroom. He is always happy and has kind things to say, even in tough situations. Congratulations, Tyler. Let's give them a round of applause. Congratulations. And next, we have some outstanding staff members we would like to recognize. If Ms. Muriel Brooks and Mr. Amanda Jackson would come forward. And you know these two wonderful ladies as the hands who prepare the countless meals that you all have had, um, over the last several months, um, as Board of Education members. Um, I know them as wonderful colleagues, but today, we are recognizing them for excelling at the North Carolina School Nutrition Association Summer Conference, which happened, um, over the summer. And I would first like you to please look at this picture, because Muriel looks like those pictures of the awards that you see holding all their Grammys. And she sent me multiple pictures, and I said, that's the one I have to use, because she can't, she can barely hold all of her awards. Um, so we just wanted to recognize them for their outstanding work. Um, Ms. Muriel Brooks received the following awards. First place in desserts category for banana pudding cupcakes. First place in creative, creative arts for National School Lunch Week Display and Creative Arts. Some of their things are on this next page. Second place in creative arts for National School Breakfast Week Display. Third place in creative arts for decorative special occasion cakes category for Stir Up Your Gifts cake. Third place in grain side dish category for processed salad. And I want to know how you got those tomatoes inside that green thing. Was it a green thing?
Actually, uh, onions, spring onions.
Very cool. Uh, and best of show in desserts category for banana pudding cupcakes. And she told me today that she's working on a new recipe and that she's going to enter in the state fair for banana pudding cookies. So, I think we should all sample those next month.
Have those here in October, okay?
We'll celebrate her again after she wins. And Amanda Jackson received the following, following awards. First place in creative arts for National School Breakfast Week Display and best of show in creative arts for National School Breakfast Week Display. So, we just wanted to give them a round of applause on a job well done.
We, we, uh, we appreciate our child nutrition. I know, I, I hope I'm speaking for the Board, I sure am. We just appreciate all of you so very much and all the hard work and the displays, just the, we see the food that you're serving our young people and, uh, it's going over great, and, and, uh, we just appreciate it so very much.
Good afternoon, everyone. Always my pleasure to recognize outstanding employees, as we have done already. Our Certified Employee of the Month is unable to be here tonight. We've invited her to come back next month, Ms. Christina Barone from Cleveland Middle. So, uh, I will look forward next month to recognizing her in front of this group. Our Classified Employee, Ms. Sharon Berry, if you'll join me. Ms. Berry is a teacher assistant at Cleveland Elementary where Dr. Yule is principal, and Dr. Yule's here, supporting his, uh, one of his staff members. And much was said about Ms. Berry, I'll read some of these things with the Board, to the Board. Ms. Berry is a TA with our third-grade team. She goes above and beyond to meet the needs of our students, not only in third grade, but school-wide. Ms. Berry drives a bus and has volunteered to drive late buses and has driven for over ten years. That's great. She goes above and beyond to build lasting relationships with all Cleveland stakeholders. Ms. Berry can be seen picking up trash, helping students open their milk in the cafeteria, and covering classrooms when in need. She is dedicated to her craft. She works hard and seeks opportunities to grow in her position. These thoughts considered, Ms. Berry is a tremendous asset to our school and community. Ms. Berry, thank you so much for what you do for Cleveland Elementary School, um, but it also impacts our school system as a whole. We can't thank you enough for what you do each and every day. Congratulations.
And Board members, we just wanted to remind you that we'll have our special recognition ceremony this Thursday, uh, evening at North Johnson at six P M. It'll be in the newly renovated, uh, cafeteria. We look forward to celebrating all of our specific school successes with you, and then we'll carry on with our special recognition ceremonies moving forward. Thank you.
Welcome, welcome to all our guests that have arrived, um, for the rest of the Board meeting. We appreciate your patience. Before we move on to the approval of the minutes, though, I, I do not want to let this moment pass without, um, saying thank you to one of our employees who's going to be leaving us. And Ms. Caitlin Fur, um, will be leaving us next week, um, to take on a new position. And, um, you know, I believe when, when people serve your district and do a wonderful job, you owe them some recognition and some thanks. And so, I just want to take a few minutes to tell her thank you. I don't know that anyone fully understands the massive job of a public information officer. Um, it is a sleep-with-your-phone-by-your-bed job. It's twenty-four-seven. I, I mean that seriously. She has her phone by her bed twenty-four-seven. So, from the Board of Education, Caitlin, we thank you. I wish you the very, very best in your next endeavor, because God calls us to different seasons of service and different seasons of our life. And so, I, I just want you to know how much we appreciate you. So, let me take this time to say thank you, uh, to you for all you've done. So, now that I've totally embarrassed her.
Madam Chair, while we have this break, another special recognition, one of our graduates that, uh, had a, had a real big weekend, Amarian Hampton from Cleveland High School. Uh, two hundred and thirty-four yards, three touchdowns, UNC's victory over App State. It wasn't without some angst that we watched it, but congratulations to Amarian, and we do hope he has a tremendous career.
Okay. We will move forward, if that's okay? Um, with the approval of minutes, I do, um, is it okay?
She's leaving.
Thank you. Oh, wow, well, happy birthday to your son.
I think Caitlin is tired of me calling her on Sunday, Ms. Andrews.
Yeah, I think so, too. Um, I am going to ask that we table, um, the approval of the August eighth regular session minutes. Um, we will address those, um, in our next board meeting. So, uh, can I have a motion to table those minutes, discuss those, the, the approval of those minutes, which is what we do?
Madam Chair, that, that actually includes the closed session minutes.
Of, um...
August eighth.
Okay, so two, okay, August, I'm sorry, August eighth, regular session, and August eighth, closed session. We will table those and address those next time. Okay? Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have, okay, I have a motion from Mr. Carroll, second from Mr. Johnson, any discussion? Hearing none, um, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of tabling the closed session minutes and the regular session minutes for August the eighth, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank y'all. Okay, we'll move on to the June thirtieth closed session minutes. I do want to add, uh, I'm going to make that change now. You've already, you've already, we've already amended it, okay? All right, so I will ask for a approval or motion to approve the June thirtieth closed session minutes, as amended. Okay, motion by Mr. Wooten, second by Mr. Johnson, any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And also, for the July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three closed session minutes, I need a motion for approval. Motion by Mr. Johnson. Second by Mr. Wooten. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. Okay, we'll move now to the adjustments of the agenda.
Madam, Madam Chair, I would, uh, I move that we add, uh, discussion, a bonus for the child nutrition staff to be placed under F one, make it F two on the agenda.
That will be under, uh, Dr. Dave, Dr. Pierce's information he gives us, so you would add a two bonus for child nutrition. I'll vote on these individually. Can I have a motion? We have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
A second by, was it you, Mr. Johnson? Oh, anyone. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any other adjustments?
There was two policies, Madam Chair. If I could look at three, two, two, five, which is also coded four, three, one, two, and seven, three, two, zero. And also, I believe it's twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, and twenty-one, twenty-five are all coupled together. And I believe a tertiary policy that's not listed would be seventy-three, oh, five. I just had some questions about those.
All right, you're asking me to remove them from consent?
Yes, ma'am, from the consent agenda, those policies.
Can you call out those numbers again?
Yes, ma'am. The first one's going to be coded three, two, two, five. It's also coded four, three, one, two, and seven, three, two, zero. And then the other three, which it will be brief, will be twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, and twenty-one, twenty-five. And not listed in the agenda review would be a support policy for that.
Are they second-read policies? Because the last three you mentioned are second-read. What, what are the first, the first ones you mentioned?
The first ones is relating to capturing and sharing media for students in the Wi-Fi hotspots.
It would be my suggestion that we can remove those. It would be my suggestion, and I would, uh, like to see us, I will add those to, under the Policy Committee Report.
Okay, and would you mind?
We can discuss it.
Just me have a couple of discussions, just a couple of points, that's all.
Right. Well, these are action items, the, the second reads are action items, so we would actually vote on those. Uh, you're saying twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, and twenty-one, twenty-five. Um, you're saying we would vote on, we would vote on those because it's second-read?
Yeah, I've looked into, I've just had a couple of questions about them, yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So, moving the items in which he's asking us to remove, he's asked to remove them, I'm placing them under the Policy Committee Chair Report, which was upcoming. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Also, any other adjustments? Also, I am announcing that we are removing item 11 from our, our agenda per court order. It does not need a vote of the board. So I am removing item 11 pursuant to court order. Any others? Okay, we'll call for a motion on, I'm sorry, I need to, I need to do the motion on Mr. Johnson's policies. So can I have a motion about moving the policies? I'm sorry, jump ahead. Motion by Mr. Carroll was second.
Second.
Second, and any more discussion? Second by Mr. Donovan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, okay. All right. We will move now into our updates from our chair, Board Committee, so Mr. Wooton.
Madam Chair, I have no reports at this time. We're still waiting on a budget to be approved by legislators.
Legal Committee, Mr. Carroll.
No report.
Mr. Tippett, our Policy Committee.
Okay, actually, Mr. Johnson, I'm gonna be touching on several, but I will make sure we address those as we go along. All right. As a missionary, there, there's a long list of first reads, if you, if you've seen those. The first 23 are all technical with policy references, legal references, cross-references is all this change. This has benefited the board and the public. Those, those are normally passed under technical part of our policy. However, the Policy Committee decided to put those on there simply because it's, it's easier to click on to them, and it's easier to look at those. And maybe we can, you know, it, it gives our, our public a chance to look at different policies, and an easier way to do that. So that is the first 23 policies that you see there. And then I think with policy 3220, it begins some, some brief changes. And then we get to the 3225 policy. And I think it talks, use of technology for different learning styles is, was added. Code of Student Conduct is added, applying to access on the internet as well. No copies of school software is, is available and things like that. What, what, what is your question?
So I think the addition I saw was that it prohibits students from capturing and sharing media. That was one of the questions I had. And also, I didn't know if that would be in somewhat conflict because in one of the other policies, and forgive me, I'm not drawing what that policy is, but it seems that we have reclassified the use of technology, specifically cell phones, as a privilege, as a, no longer a privilege, it's more so of a right. Am I correct in saying that?
That's correct, because of the way, the way things are now.
You need them, right? You, you need them. So if you're, if you're gonna reclassify it wholeheartedly as a right, not a privilege, then I think we're kinda like stepping in some murky waters by trying to dictate a policy saying you cannot capture and share media because we have already afforded it to them as a right. We're reclassifying that ourself, and now we're trying to limit that right. I don't know if that, I don't know if I'm conveying that properly, but I'm just curious about that. And if there is any other associated criminal offenses or like policy violations, they should already be covered. So if you're sharing material that's bully or whatever, you know, bully material, that's covered under another North Carolina general statute. So there's already applicable laws with application to technology to kinda cover that. I just don't want to be in a situation where we're giving them a right and then restricting them their right, and then the very right we give them puts us in hot water. That was the first question I had, and I think that might be more so for legal counsel. But the second one was about Wi-Fi hotspots and how we are going to mandate that they not create a Wi-Fi hotspot, and they will not have an access point that they could create, for example, from their mobile phone. Is that correct in that policy?
That's the discussion. And, and, and just so you know, because this is first read, well, what I'm, I'm making notice of what you're doing, and we, we will discuss that at Policy Committee.
Yeah, and I think it's just kinda problematic because the FCC has a regulation that says you will not interfere with someone's ability to have like a hotspot. Now, I'm very aware that the FCC, their regulation, which I believe is 330 or 333, but the FCC regulation is applicable to say like installing software or hardware that would prevent someone from having like a hotspot, because there are blockers out there. However, I think we find ourselves in, I think we're just in conflict if we're saying, okay, we're gonna interfere, we're not gonna allow you to have it. I don't know if, I understand that they have several attorneys at Policy Committee. Has this ever been an issue before, Ms. Cornetto?
We'll definitely review it for the Policy Committee on Thursday.
Right, and then, again, because it's first read, we'll go back and look at any, anything that comes in on those.
Okay. Thank you. And that was only two things I had about that particular policy. I think it, I think it's FCC Regulation 330 or 333 that will not allow you to interfere with like a Wi-Fi, MiFi, some type of connection. So I just want to be sure we're clean there.
No problem.
Yeah.
Are you good, is that, is that, those two items on that one? All right. Yeah, and on the first read, Board members, I would call your attention to policy 5210. And I want to, I want to touch on this very briefly, because this was a, that is for dissemination, distribution of, of materials, materials in the, in our schools. That's a very lengthy policy. It's one that I still have some, some concerns on, even though we're, it's on the first read. And I welcome all input for that. And the reason I call your attention to that, if, if you recall, the last board meeting, we had a, a group, two individuals came up, represented a group, to give out pocket constitutions to our schools. According to policy, when you do that, you go to the principal and request that for each principal. That organization was asking to do it in all of our middle and high schools, which have been over 20 applications, which you could do. However, my concern is if you get different responses to those applications. So I asked the Chair to, to grant those speakers to do in the, the public speaker, in the public speaking part. I spoke with the individuals. I asked, told them that we could, we could give them an extra minute if they needed it. And I think I was informed that we gave them a minute and 12 seconds. Okay, but the point being, that's why we did that, that's why we didn't, we went over with that. Because that organization is, they've, they've been very cooperative, and what they plan to do with the pocket constitutions, they're gonna deliver those here, we're gonna look through, make sure there's nothing in those, and then, but we're gonna deliver those to the eighth grade history classes and your high school American history classes. So that, that's, that's the process, and that's why, that's why it was done different, and that's why they were granted an extra minute. If, if any of our public want, you know, have, have an issue with that, you can blame me for that. I requested that from the Chair. But, but I do want you to look at that policy, because I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with where that policy is written, because I'm, I guess I'm more concerned with a prince, I, I'm not concerned with the principal denying something. I'm more concerned with the principal who may approve something, because once it's approved, you can't pull it back, and the board won't see it. So that, that's, that's an area that I, that I wanna look at, and I want, want to give special attention to this Thursday's meeting. All right, I think that's all the first read. As we go to second reads, Ronald, you mentioned 2120, that's actually the first one?
Yeah, and I'll couple them all in one with 2120, 21, and 2125. This seem, indicate that board members would be held to the same standards as employees, or they would have to adhere to all board policies. And the way I interpreted that is that it would almost be like, you know, you are in that manner an employee of Johnston County Public Schools, because you've pretty much consensually agreed that you're gonna go by that particular code of ethics, which is 7305, well-written policy, by the way. But you, you can't, according to North Carolina law, Coach Cannon, your elected officials cannot be your employees. Like, that is very well stated by the UNC School of Government. And the only way they can is in very special circumstances. Like, if you're a town with a population less than, you know, a couple thousand, I, I may be getting that wrong, but it's a very limited, specific set of circumstances where your elected officials can be your employees. Therefore, I just don't think it's appropriate to bind them to the employee rules whenever you don't have that. I mean, obviously, you have applicable laws, applicable general statutes that refers to elected officials. I think that that should just govern that role and that capacity. When you start consenting and changing them and subjecting them to the rules and code of conduct of employees, I think you're kinda in murky water, because North Carolina law specifically says that your elected officials cannot be your employees. And that was just something that, go ahead.
Okay, tell me where you're reading from. Which, which, is it 20, is it 2120?
Yeah.
Is it 120, number four? Number four, B4? Is that where you're, is that where you're referencing?
It should be in that area, comply with all board policies and rules.
Is that where you're referencing? Yeah, and I think we looked at that.
So I don't have it in front of me. Yeah, I've got it. Yeah, it's a model civility and integrity to students, employees, and all elements of the community by encouraging the free expression of opinion by all board members, engaging in respectful dialogue with fellow board members on matters being considered by the board, and complying with all board policies that set expectations for staff conduct, regardless of whether the policies expressly require compliance by board members. It's the last part. It's that one sentence.
We don't have the same expectations for board members that we have for our employees?
No, it's not about really expectations. It's about what the punitive measures would be if the expectations are interpreted to be wrong by a group of individuals. So by doing that, if you don't like something I do, or if you interpret it as a way that is in violation of board policy, I'm consenting to you taking a punitive action against me. And to be quite frank, and with all politeness, you don't have that right unless I give you that right. And you, you cannot make your elected officials your employees. So the people run the government, not the government run the people. So we, we are in charge of running the school system. If we give the school system authority over us, then it's just backwards from the way it was intended. And I hope I'm making sense, and I hope I'm being polite in the way I'm conveying that.
I think I understand, I mean, I, I see your point, but I don't, I, I don't see the, I don't see the need for differentiation based on policy. Because I, I think, I think as a board member, and, and if I, if I had an example of, of a policy, or something you're, you're specifically referring to, because what I'm thinking is the ethics and all those things, I mean, I think board policy, board members should follow those same policies. I mean, I think we all agree on that. So I mean, I, it, it's, I'm not sure if you, if there's a, give, if you can give me an example of a policy, of a, of a school policy that a board, that a board member may, may not supposed to, may, may not.
And I don't think that there is any doubt that you should conduct yourself in a way that models integrity. I mean, that's not the issue here. The issue is, is that by passing this, you're almost giving the board judicial authority over you. And the board is not, should not have judicial authority over a board member, because it is up to the interpretation of seven people of what a consequence should be. And that's just not the way it should be. We're gonna disagree on here, and heaven forbid that if a disagreement amongst one or two of us, or three of us, would land us in a position where we're saying, okay, we don't, we don't believe you're ethically or morally right, or you don't want to give away that judicial authority. I mean, that, it's just, it's out of compliance with North Carolina law, in my opinion, because we're, elected officials are not your employees. It is very specifically written in North Carolina law. So I can get it morally and ethically, I could see where you're at. But legally, I hope you see where I'm coming from, because we're not afforded the same rights and protections as employees. We're not. So therefore, I just don't see how you could hold us to the same standards without giving the same rights and privileges afforded to employees. And that's just my opinion.
So what, so what do you think should be crossed out?
Last line, and complying with all board policies that set expectations for staff conduct, whether the policies expressly require compliance by board members. The, I mean, the thing I see on the policy is that we're committing to do this. I don't see retribution on there. I'm, I'm trying to figure out the retribution part, because I don't see anything on here that says there's retribution by any board or. So you can, right, so say what you said again. So you say that first part one more time. Yeah, so I, this is, in order to implement the above standards, each board member commits. So we're committing to do in the following. Complying with board policy. We're committing to comply with board policy. I don't see anything that says, if you don't do this, then there's gonna be retribution. And is there a policy that there is retribution if you don't follow this? There is a retaliation policy, however, it is enforced by the same group of people that you would be claiming is retaliating against you. So if one of us does something that six of us don't like, then if there is a policy violation, then they can take punitive actions and punitive measures against you. I don't really. I mean, I think there's a process for that anyways, censors, motions, stuff like that, right? Correct, there is absolutely a policy, but here you're consenting to something. Like, I, I'm just not in favor of consenting to something that is in conflict with North Carolina law.
I'm not sure it's in conflict. We're, we're not in, this doesn't imply employment at all. This implies a character trait. We're, we're, we're asking an employee to do certain things. We expect this of you. And what I'm hearing you saying is that, well, you know, while we expect our employees to adhere to certain, you know, standards, don't, don't hold me that standard, just the ones I want.
They have an employment contract.
It ain't about employment. It's about, it's about the way you conduct yourself. It's about the way you behave. And that's exactly what's wrong today, is that, you know, people that are elected, everybody, it just seems, feels like they are not held to the same standard as the average Joe out there. And we should be. It's a commitment, it's a commitment. It's not employment. Don't, don't be confused by this. This is only about doing what you're asking someone else to do, and you've been elected to even be the, the representative.
Okay, if, if I may, because, because, you know, the, the committee had a long conversation about this. Ms. Cornetto, is, is what we have here legal? Does it pass the legality test?
So I just want to point one thing out. Look at the tone you just took with me, because I disagreed with you.
I didn't take any tone with anybody.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean you. I mean the collective as a whole. The collective as a whole. I just disagreed. I did it in a very agreeable way, right?
I did, too. I didn't call any names, I just said, I'm passionate about, I, I just don't think, I don't think the public appreciates, you know, but anyway, go ahead.
No, I think I'm very rooted in my argument as far as North Carolina law goes. Your elected officials are not your employees. And I think you're circumventing the process, and it's just backwards, in my opinion.
And I could, and I appreciate, and I haven't yelled at you, but, but I appreciate you, I appreciate your opinion, and I have a problem with it. And like I said, this discussion was had in, in the committee meeting. At, at this point in time, I mean, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with the way it's written. But again, I appreciate your comments.
I agree with Mr., I agree with Mr. Johnson that we are not staff. We do not have an employment contract with the district. We are elected officials. It is bad policy to administrate over us like we are staff, because we are not.
Thank you, Ms. Antoine, for your, sharing your concerns. No, you had another. Oh, oh, that. Oh, okay, so you don't have anything specific for 2121 and?
I was just pulling those particular three.
Got you, got you. Okay, no, that's all. No, he, he was all.
Yeah, just the 2000 block.
Right, right. So only on the second read. So we are going to vote on 2120, 2121, and 2125, correct? Mr. Johnson, I'm just, I'm looking at you. That's correct. That's the ones we pulled out. Because we pulled them out of consent agenda, we will vote on those now. We'll vote on them to be a, okay. We'll vote on them to be approved as they are written, as we currently have them written. So I will entertain a motion.
Tell me, second.
I have a motion to accept these policies, 2120, 2121, and 2125, as they are written. I have a second by Mr., was that Mr. Carroll? Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of these policies as they are currently written, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, all opposed?
No.
No, 5-2. Okay. Oh, sorry.
I think, I think the, I don't think there was any issues on the others, second reading ones. All come, all the comments that, that people sent in were, were discussed by the board. So at this time, everything is, I don't think there's any, anything else that, that jumps out on those other second read ones. that jumps out on those other second read ones. So we'll be finished at this time.
I am going to interrupt the, uh, process that we're going through and go to, uh, public comments at this time, because we want to honor your presence here today at six o'clock. So what we will do is do the public comment, and then come back, and it will be, um, Mr. Carroll, it'll be your turn for bond committee report when we return. But you're not doing it right now.
Listen, I have no report.
Okay, okay. Well, that one's done. We'll come back with Ms. Antoine on the legislative. Okay, uh, if you will allow me, please, to read this information. Tonight, we have eight speakers signed up for public comments. Citizens who have signed up to address the board during the public comment session will be recognized in the order in which they signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes to present comments to the board. However, the public comment session will not exceed sixty minutes, uh, total, except by a majority vote of the board. The board suggests that a specific personal, personnel or student matters be addressed to the school principal, the Johnston County Public School System official responsible for the program or facility, or to the superintendent. Citizens who address the board shall not use language that is obscene, profane, threatening, contains fighting or inflammatory words, or otherwise disruptive to the orderly conduct of business. Any person who willfully interrupts, disrupts, or disturbs an official meeting, and who, upon being directed to leave the meeting by the presiding officer, willfully refuses to leave the meeting, may be found guilty of a class-two misdemeanor pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot seventeen. The first speaker is Angelique Leggett.
Hi, how are you all? It's good to see you all, and Dr. Bracy. I am here to speak about two things. I am Angelique Leggett, and the first thing I want to talk about is the signup genius. Now, the last time I was here, I mentioned the signup genius. Everyone is doing it, and it would be convenient for a lot of people who can't make it here at four o'clock. Um, the situation you had a couple of weeks ago would also kind of eliminate that as well. So if you don't see that, that may be an issue, I just wanted to bring up that signup genius would really help. It would help the people who are working and can't get off, and it would help, um, you know, everyone that comes in and what time. The second thing I, I want to mention is the, so I like to do research first and figure out what I'm talking about, right? And I found out that the charter schools are pretty much taking our public money, right? So if a public school student goes to a charter school, then that money follows that student, and then if the kid comes back, that money's not coming back. So that's a problem. I don't know if you guys think it's a problem, but I think it's a problem, because that's my tax dollars. And, um, I'd like that back here. I don't know how many times this has happened, but I did request the information, because I'd like to see the numbers on that. I'd like to see where our, our Johnston County tax dollars are going. And, um, one of the things that I'm hearing here is, like, we have this Board of Education, public school, charter school, and I don't see those things going together, right? If you're on this board, I think you should be pushing for public schools, right? It's like that little scripture, I guess I can, I can say this, you know, when you're slaving for two masters, you're gonna hate one and just, you know? You can't be for charter schools and public schools. You have to, you have to pick a side. So I'd like that information. I did request it, but, um, I haven't received it yet, so I'd like the numbers on that, so that I can do, you know, some more research, and then I can come up here and speak more intelligently about it. And, um, it is good to see you all here. I haven't seen you in a while, because I was threatened and told to stay in my place, but you know what? This is my place, right? So I'm back. And, um, I'm glad to see you guys all here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ben Chapman.
Hello, uh, my name is Ben Chapman. Uh, I've been advocating for the LGBTQ+ community of Johnston County for a little over a year now. Uh, I'm here to express concern about rhetoric that creates a hostile environment for LGBTQ+ staff and students. In Johnston County Public Schools, respect is defined as understanding that all people have value as human beings, and compassion, treating others as you would like to be treated. Allegedly, the user SchoolAdvocate8 on X is member of the board, Michelle Antoine. The two accounts she purportedly manages are SchoolAdvocate8 and Joko Antoine. She has referred to openly LGBT students enrolled in Johnston County schools as a contagion. She engaged with a user that said they wanted to form fugitive LGBTQ squads. She said the progress pride flag represented the collapse of Western civilization. Taken individually, these statements are disqualifying for an educator, let alone a member of the Board of Education. Uh, in particular, I have dwelt on the phrase fugitive LGBTQ squads. I'm a local history professional, but I don't have to look to history to see LGBT people being marginalized, investigated, and criminalized by their governments. It's happening in Uganda, Florida, Texas, and because we have feckless representatives in the General Assembly, it's happening here. To imply that minority communities are a threat to the whole, and that we somehow represent a disease that must be dealt with, is the language of genocide. It's unacceptable from a member of this board, it's unacceptable from an elected official, and you don't have to accept it. What I would like to see this board, what I would like to see is this board take action. Examine this account, these public posts, and consider them as you would a public speech given in the town square. Consider them in the context of a policy you've changed and adopted today, Policy two-one-two-zero, Code of Ethics for School Board Members. To the remaining board, I thank you for your time, as well as your respect and compassion for LGBT youth in Johnston County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, our, our next speaker is Susan Locklear.
Hi, my name is Susan Locklear. I stand before you to express the outrage for what has transpired at Corinth Holders High School over the past two weeks, and apparently is still happening today. The young ladies at Corinth have been harassed, embarrassed, and humiliated in front of their peers. I know that this is not news to any of you, as I have sent emails, as have other parents. I'd like to know what the intent of the dress code policy is. My understanding, having dealt in code compliance most of my career, is that we have to understand the intent. And my understanding of the intent is to prevent the butts, the breasts, and the gentiles from being exposed. And if that's the case, then why can't the policy just simply state that? It leaves, it allows for more consistency in identifying the issues and enforcing them. The young ladies that I speak of are rule followers. They are honor students, they are student athletes, they're the ones you need to keep your standardized test scores up. Most, and possibly all, have never been in trouble. To be called out in front of their peers when they have always been the model student is mortifying and traumatizing to them. I have expressed to other parents that I'm hopeful that the board will right this wrong, and our young ladies will not be subject to the sexism anymore. However, I would like to know what actions will be taken to reassure these students that they are safe to attend school without harassment from administration and staff at Corinth Holders High School. Who is verbally, uh, communicating the message to the students that what has transpired is not acceptable and should not have happened? Who is gonna be accountable? These, these young ladies were publicly humiliated. The adults need to be held accountable for their actions and the emotional toll this sexism has taken on these students. Who's gonna apologize publicly to these young ladies and communicate the expectation of staff moving forward? I have provided each of you with two packets, one of definitions, and one of fifteen examples of teenage fashion that has, and some have not, been questioned the first eight days of school. I'm not gonna read the definitions because of time, but the definition does include body shaming. When a young lady who's fully dressed from shoulders to toes is pulled aside and told that they have to report to the office because their shirt is not long enough to cover their bottom, that is body shaming. And it has occurred, I know personally, on two occasions. These young ladies are mortified that their bodies are being examined by these adults searching for the slightest exposure of skin. The only definition I will read, sex discrimination occurs when men and women who are similarly situated are treated differently based on gender. Takes place when deliberate, repeated, and unsolicited verbal comments or gestures are unwelcome. Sex discrimination also occurs when an organization's policy has a disproportionate adverse impact on a person or group, in this case, the young women of Corinth. Pull the numbers and tell me how many of the young men at Corinth are being dress coded because they're showing too much leg, or better yet, their shirt doesn't cover their butt. My point to providing these definitions is this: What has occurred at Corinth Holders is illegal. If this board is above taking responsibility and holding those responsible accountable to these students, I will be pursuing legal action against the school, the board, the staff, whomever I need, to protect these young ladies from any further emotional damage.
Ms. Locklear, I appreciate-
This is not a threat, but more of a matter of fact. Emails have not gotten your attention, so maybe a lawsuit will.
Thank you, Ms. Locklear. Uh, next speaker's April Lee.
Ma'am, ma'am, did you, you have all the pictures labeled on the back?
Yeah.
Are they all labeled on the back?
On the back, I'd like to give you a description of what's-
Of what, what occurred for that, for that photo. Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Lee?
Good evening, Chair Andrews, Vice Chair Tippett, members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. I am April Lee, and I'm a parent of students who attend Johnston County Public Schools, a taxpayer, and a public education advocate. Dress code has been burning up the socials lately since the passage of the amended dress code. I'm not sure I'm gonna do much better than this, but I read a lot. And I'm also the mom of a thirteen-year-old daughter who's in the eighth grade. Um, the intent of the dress code that you just recently amended was to be less strict than the previous iteration. But many schools did not enforce the previous dress code, so this dress code seems very restrictive now that it's being applied. However, there are ramifications. What we are actually doing is policing our girls' bodies. We can write a dress code that doesn't discriminate intentionally, but when it's applied and a group of our students are the ones targeted, then it is discriminatory in practice. When girls can't wear clothing like athletic shorts, or their bra strap slides off their shoulder, and that's called a dress code violation, we have an issue. The other issue is that, you know, boys can't control themselves, or their thoughts, because, oh my, a shoulder, a bra strap, a pair of athletic shorts, it's really mind-blowing. Uh, they seem to control themselves in other areas, but somehow cannot do it at school. Um, but we are making our girls responsible for the thoughts and actions of other people, but particularly of boys. It removes boys' culpabilities, like they can't even control themselves. We are teaching our girls to be ashamed and insecure, and we are teaching our boys that they aren't responsible for their own thoughts and actions. In conclusion, we don't need to make our dress code more restrictive. As long as breasts, butts, and genitals aren't hanging out of clothing, we don't need to target our girls. They don't need to lose instructional time from their classes. Let's stop blowing the dress code out of proportion, and let's just be reasonable. I would also like to address the removal of item eleven, Report Pursuant to Policy seventeen fifty, grievance of an employee. While y'all can't talk about it, I can. It is unfortunate that Michelle Antoine so desperately does not want the public to know what she has done, that she went so far as, I'm not gonna be specific-
I moved, I moved to-
Yeah, I can't, yeah, I need, I need to stop you. I need to stop you.
We'll ask for you to be removed.
Yeah, I need to-
Okay, I understand.
I need to stop you.
I'm just-
No, I need to stop you.
Okay.
Okay?
Can I finish the last part of what I'm gonna say?
If it doesn't have to do with that.
It does not. But I'm only gonna say this, Mr. Johnson, your reaction to the removal of the item from the agenda was disgusting and childish. I really hope it was caught on camera.
Thank, thank you.
But if it wasn't, the whole room saw it.
Thank you, thank you. Um, our next speaker is Jessica Hines.
Okay.
I'm short. Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to let me speak tonight. First, I would like to introduce myself. My name is Jessica Hines. My husband and I have six children, three which have already graduated from Corinth, and three currently enrolled, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade. This is our tenth consecutive year at this school, and I should also add that we absolutely love our school, the teachers, administration, and everyone has always been so wonderful. I had heard that the first week of school was very rough for the dress code. I heard they were being strict, and I heard that the outfits were dressed, that they were dress coding were not inappropriate. I had also heard that things were getting out of hand. However, at that time, everything was hearsay. And what I wasn't going to do was get caught up in the he-said, she-said stuff about the dress code. However, things changed. I saw firsthand when my daughter Bailey was dress coded for the outfit that she's wearing tonight. She was told by administration that she was inappropriately dressed, and that her shorts were too short for school. I do not believe her shorts are inappropriate, however, they are. However, are they too short for school? I'm gonna leave that for, to you to decide. I can sit here and tell you that I was upset and frustrated, infuriated with the administration for the way they spoke to her. But let's be honest, that's not going to get us anywhere. So I'll go back to the question I had to originally ask myself: What is happening here? I've taken some time to review the dress code language where it states, upper chest to mid-thigh. It goes on to tell us, as long as it covers the breasts, genitals, and buttocks with opaque fabric. So which is it? Is it to cover the breasts, genitals, and buttocks? Or is it to cover from the upper chest to the mid-thigh? Because as you can see, those are not the same thing. So I tell myself, how can I be upset with our administration if they're simply following what is clearly written in black and white? If as a school board, you accept my daughter's outfit as being school-appropriate, then I ask you to revisit the dress code and eliminate the upper body to mid-thigh portion. If Corinth is the only school that is sticking to the written word, then I would say that the written word needs to be adjusted, and not that the administration is wrong. It appears they are following what you have all laid out for them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our, our next speaker is Cora, and I'm gonna let you say your last name.
Altizer.
Altizer, okay.
Hi, I'm Cora Altizer, and I'm gonna be talking about the dress code. I am more than a distraction, and I am more than an object of attraction and fantasization. I am a straight A student, an athlete, a student leader, and an active citizen. And so are all the other women and young girls in Johnston County schools. Since moving to Johnston County in two thousand twelve, I loved living here, with our local pride, farming community, and small-town feel. But now, I feel ashamed of my home. My home is now a place where sexualization and harassment are excused in the name of boys' lack of self-control. Although the dress code is supposed to apply to all age groups and public schools, I only started to notice my fellow students and peers being dress coded right around the time most young women hit puberty, middle school. Why is this, I wondered? Why now do the teachers and staff suddenly care about the spaghetti straps on my shirt? They never did before. Then, as I grew older, I realized why. Because I was now at the age where I could be sexualized. I was now closer to a woman than a girl. Everything I wore was now somehow considered coded, and everything I did had a different meaning. I was still playing with Barbies at the time, so how on earth did my training bra change anything? It didn't change anything for me, but to the world, the second I put on my first bra, the way they saw me changed forever, even in the sacred place of learning that I had learned to love, school. In the wise words of Jean Pidgeot, a Swiss, a Swiss psychologist, the principal goal of education in the schools should be creating men and women who are capable of doing new things, not simply repeating what other generations have done. Also, according to a Stanford legal scholar, Richard Thompson Ford, dress codes are a Rosetta Stone to decode social norms and resistance of time and place. For decades, fashion and clothing have been used as a device of power and control. Dress codes and clothing have been used as an ex, form of expression and oppression Dress codes and clothing have been used as an ex, form of expression and oppression throughout society, to reinforcing hierarchies and inequities in society. Continuing to uphold dress codes and the ideas that they enforce only perpetuates the division of women and men in society, which has been practiced throughout generations before us. Isn't the purpose of education to dissolve these inequities? From civil rights activists in the nineteen-sixties America who wore their Sunday vest at protests to demonstrate they're worthy, worthy of dignity and respect, as they challenged institutions that kept black people at the bottom of the social hierarchy, to the Age of Enlightenment in Europe, a pair of down business suits symbolized as a departure of the status-based society of pre, previous aristocratic regimes. Wearing similar or differing clothing from one's peers reflects a time period's new values, such as sensibility, rationality, and even equality. Students now express their opinions, individuality, and orientation through closing, clothing such as crop tops, colored hair, and holes in jeans.
Thank, thank you, I appreciate your comments. Our next speaker, thank you. Our next speaker, Grace Alzauer, did I say that right?
My name is Grace Alzauer.
Alzauer.
I am a junior at Corinth Holders High School, and I'm here to discuss the dress code with you. The skin on my legs should not distract you. The exposure of my shoulders should not attract you. The lack of coverage on my stomach should not tempt you. Teacher or student, man or woman, my growing teenage body should not be a problem to the learning environment around me. Growing up a woman is hard enough as it is, but when adults twenty to thirty years older than you begin to sexualize you for the way you dress or how your body looks, it further damages the growth of a young teenage girl's mind. It leaves young women feeling discouraged, uncomfortable, and dirty for doing, for doing something as easy as putting on an outfit that makes them feel confident and comfortable. Not only does the enforcement of a strict dress code make women feel insecure about the way their body looks, but let me ask you this: How does it benefit the school system in any way? Does it improve test scores? Does it boost a class's passing rate? Does it improve graduation percentages? No? Well, then, other students and parents in the county must express their gratitude to the board for their work and making sure teenage girls stayed covered. No? Well, then, it must stop young teenage boys from daydreaming about dirty things involving girls in class. No? Well, then, please explain this to me: How does this benefit your system in any way, shape, or form? According to a two thousand twenty study written in part, Todd A. D. De Michele, a professor at the University of New Hampshire, who has researched the litigation of dress codes and public schools that focus on covering girls' bodies, contributes to the very problem that dress code seeks to address: the inappropriate sexualization of female students. In an analysis of dress codes at twenty-five New Hampshire public schools, the researchers found that most of the policies specifically targeted girls, with policies on covering breast, cleavage, collarbone, and shoulders. The study notes that some of the garments prohibited in the school's policies, such as tank tops and strapless shirts, are prohibited because they are considered sexy. I want to know what is sexy about a growing girl's shoulders, arms, collarbones, to a full-grown adult at my school? If your reason is because you do not want the staff to be distracted, I think your problem goes way past the control of the students. I should feel safe around my staff. I should feel comfortable around my teachers. I, as a growing woman, should not have to worry about the superiors finding anything about my body distracting, and the fact that it has been brought to that level is concerning in and of itself. De Michele goes to say, the dress code cho, choice of females is presumed to be designed to attract, to attract attention from males. And I would like to say, if this is your argument, that you think boys are distracted, or that girls' only reason to wear what they wear is to attract attention from boys, you are sorely mistaken. Maybe if the school focused on more teaching boys respect women, to respect women and their bodies instead of objectifying and sexualizing them, we would live in a world with lower sexual assault rates. And following that, don't you think if we taught women that it is okay to put on clothes on their bodies that make them feel comfortable? And if it's important to speak out about mistreatment by men, women of all ages would feel more comfortable and confident coming forth with their stories concerning rape and sexual assault?
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Courtney Alzer.
Altizer.
Alzizer, I'm sorry.
I am Courtney Altizer. I am an academic in higher education. I taught at Johnson Community College with Mr. Johnson here. In fact, I was part of his hiring, I believe. And I also continue to be in higher academic education. According to a report from the Government Accountability Office, it found that approximately ninety percent of dress codes prohibit some form of clothing typically associated with girls and women, including short skirts, tank tops, crop tops, shorts, and form-fitting clothing. This is compared to the sixty-nine percent of dress code policies that target clothing traditionally worn by boys, such as sagging jeans, hats, and hoodies. Joko's dress code is, in my opinion, as a parent of both a teenage girl and a pre-teen boy, are severely gender biased and poorly or severely enforced at Corinth Holder High School specifically. These students have been dress coded at Corinth Holder High School since the beginning of the term. Teachers and staff and administrators are humiliating and body-shaming our teenage girls by pulling them aside in front of all the school as they enter and line them up in front of their peers to be judged. Teachers and staff are telling our female students that they look provocative and inappropriate, even being told to raise their arms over their heads to see if their shirt rides up. I can tell you right now, that would not pass. My husband's T-shirts would not pass that test. I don't think our teenage girls should. This dress code and its enforcement sends the message to our impressionable girls that their bodies are only serving as a distraction to their male counterparts, which is just another form of victim blaming, and will likely follow them to adulthood. I know it did for me. They will less likely speak out about gender violence, violence, and assault as a result of this, too. Statistics shows. Instead of school administrators calling out girls and making them feel as if they're, their bodies are nothing more than an object to be looked at, instead, teachers and administrators can advocate for a more inclusive and respectful environment. Female students are being scolded and punished while boys continue their education unfettered. The subjective nature of this dress code leaves women and girls vulnerable to individual teachers and administrators' perceptions of what is inappropriate and implies that an individual's right to wear what they want should be discounted in favor of another person's distraction. And I am the mother of Cora Altizer, who is also Lieutenant Governor of Key Club for the Carolinas.
Thank you so much. Appreciate, I appreciate all of those who come forward and share your concerns and public comment, because that's what the session is for, is for you to share your concerns, and we appreciate that. We're going to, that concludes, uh, public comments, so we're going to move forward with our agenda, and we'll go back to our committee chair, reports, and legislative committee. Ms. Anton.
So we met at the end of August, and we were joined by, uh, Mr. Britt, our Chief Financial Officer, and Dr. Bracy, and of course, Ms. Dance was there, and all members of the committee were present. And we had a, a very good, robust discussion regarding what we wanted to see happen with the budget. Uh, it was about an hour and a half-long meeting, and, um, Mr. Carroll suggested that we bring forward a resolution, so, uh, I have, um, drafted a resolution. I had Mr. Britt, um, help me a little bit, and I had, um, we talked about it at last week's agenda meeting, pre-agenda meeting, and we had a couple asks for some additions, and so those were put in. I don't know if you want me to read the whole resolution?
I, I would just read, um, be it, the be it resolved, what we're asking for on page two.
So.
These are the, go ahead, but these are things we are.
Right, so we have a whole, um, it is preceded, but what I'm going to read is preceded by a bunch of whereas, is whereas, um, there's a whole bunch of different things, and then it talks about what we want to happen. Now that we've identified these things, we would like to see these happen with our budget. So now, therefore, be it resolved that the Johnson County Board of Education strongly supports a House and Senate conference budget bill that would stipulate at a minimum a raise in teacher salary across the board by seven and a half percent for the bionium, with step increases to make an eleven percent increase over that period, with an additional seventy million allocated to local funds for teacher supplements. Issuing across-the-board salary increase for all staff, including non-certified employees, at seven and a half percent for the bionium, with an additional two percent raise for bus drivers. Provides reinstatement of master's pay in consideration of longevity pay. Creates a stabilization fund for any impact the expansion of opportunity scholarship may have on low enrollment public schools. Includes a health personnel allotment expanded from the school psychologist allotment, which at minimum provides another one hundred and twenty positions in schools to meet children's physical and emotional needs. Establishes a state fund that resolves to pay all outstanding lunch debt for students. Creates a more equitable model that fully funds exceptional needs students, or an increase in the thirteen percent cap of dollars allocated for the education of exceptional needs students. Secures safety grant money available for each public school district to ensure a safe learning environment. Reinstates healthcare for teachers and state employees that retire within thirty years of service to the state of North Carolina. Be it further resolved that the Johnson County Board advises the North Carolina General Assembly that the future funding of any portion of the projected one point five billion NC pathways to excellence would be better spent on pay raises for teacher, and an additional yearly funding of one point two million to the DPI license department to better expedite the establishment process, um, process of licensure. So, I'm going to ask for a motion.
You can make the motion.
Okay, well, I, so then I move that, um, the Board of Education, uh, passed this resolution tonight, so we can, uh, submit it to the speakers of the Senate and the House, and, um, also to our local representatives.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Antoine, a second by Mr. Wooton. Any further discussion? Appreciate, uh, you doing this, I appreciate Mr. Britt, I appreciate y'all working together on this, thank you. No other discussion?
Madam Chairman, it, statement by this board that we want our staff to know that we support their position, uh, in that the state is underfunding teacher salaries. They're also underfunding our, um, EC program. They capped it at, I think, thirteen percent, and, um, uh, almost every, every county in the state is above that percentage, so, um, and we also wanted to make a statement, I think, about the, uh, pathways to excellence that is, could only be dreamed up in a high tower with no windows, no lights, and no input from the people that they're affected. So, anyway, I, I, I appreciate our committee coming in with a resolution and us considering it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of this resolution adopted by the board, again, that will be presented to, um, our General Assembly. Would you please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Good, thank you so much, seven oh, thank you.
That's all I had for committee.
Okay. Uh, I just have a few updates, I know we're, and we'll, uh, if they want to take a break, we'll take a break after this, but, uh, we've, this is just my updates. We started school, um, as you have heard from many of ours who've been in school, I think today is our tenth day, is that correct? Um, I just want to thank everyone who worked so hard to get this school year started. Um, this is a mammoth job, and I'm, I just, uh, if I, if I list people, I'll, I'll leave somebody out, but I particularly want to thank our transportation department, Dr. Pierce, our child nutrition, all the people, uh, who, who worked all summer long, our custodians, um, our, our facilities people, to help get our schools ready, and then to have it ready for our students to walk into, um, uh, on the money that we started school. They prepared for a wonderful, um, beginning. We do have, as Ms. Fur said, um, Thursday night, we will have a celebration of our, uh, our performance, and, um, we're going to receive that information here in just a minute, so we'll all get to see how we've done academically, but we will have a celebration at North Johnson High School, the newly renovated cafeteria, to acknowledge our student, our schools that have met and exceeded growth. That's a celebration, and we need to celebrate. When we do good things, we need to celebrate. Uh, our fall activities, uh, are all in full force, as many of you parents know, your kids are busy with all kinds of things, um, but we, uh, we're excited about that. We do have, um, a workday, September twenty-second, so any parents that are listening, your children don't have school on September twenty-second. We do have a board retreat on September twenty-fifth at the SRAK. Um, we also, um, have, uh, uh, low-performing, our low-performing schools will, will have a special call meeting October third, and our low-performing schools will come and present to us their SIP plans, and this is just an effort for us to, to see what, what they're doing, because our goal is that we will not have any low-performing schools, and so we want to help, do what we can to help those schools. That'll be on October third. Um, we do have a legislative breakfast scheduled for October sixteenth. That will be a, a opportunity for us to network with all of our elected officials. We feel that's valuable, and communication, that we all sort of understand where we are. And I'm sorry that he left before, um, we got to this, because I think he had another engagement, but prior to, uh, the gentleman was here, but I ju, I can't go, I have, I want to announce that Towne Smithfield has hired a new police chief, and he came tonight to our meeting, but he had a, another engagement that he had to get to, but his name is Pete Hedrick. He, like I said, he was here earlier, but I hope we have an opportunity to welcome him to our community. We're excited to have that new position in place. So that's really all I have, but I just wanted to make the community aware as much as possible, and I'm sure I left something out. Um, we good to continue? You better say something.
I just want to take a break.
Okay, well, we'll, okay, five-minute, five-minute break at the max. We'll be adjourned for five minutes. We'll be adjourned for five minutes. I'd like to get started back, please. Our first order of business as we return back into session will be advisory appointments. I will start us off. The current advisory council members at Clayton Middle School have approved and recommended the following applicants on the advisory council upon our approval. The principal and advisory council are suggesting the following recommendations. Conrad Bowie to a three-year term of appointment, Josh Holloman to a three-year term of appointment, and Dawn Suzad to a three-year term of appointment. I'll use that as a motion and I believe Mr. Donovan, you have one.
The current advisory council members at Forks Elementary School have approved and recommended the following appointments and renewals for the advisory council upon board approval. So Jeremy Thompson for a three-year term appointment, Emily Johnson for a three-year term appointment, Brandon Batten for a three-year term appointment, Deborah Westerbrook for a three-year term reappointment, Bobby Judge for a three-year term reappointment, and Carly Fogleman for a three-year term reappointment.
Okay, and Mr. Wooton?
Mr. Kerwin at Powhatan Elementary School and advisory council has approved Jean Lombos as, for a three-year term for an appointment.
Okay, so we've received those, I have a motion. Do I have a second for this? Have a second for Mr. Johnson, any discussion? All those in favor of these individuals being appointed to advisory councils of their particular schools, please indicate, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank y'all, Dr. Bracy.
Madam Chair, this time I ask that the board approve consent items numbers one through ten.
Second.
I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry, who, who made the motion? My mind was on something else. Okay, okay. For Dr. Bracy, consent? Who made the motion? Kay, okay, who, and the second was Mr. Wooton, I'm sorry, I was listening to Dr. Bracy. Okay, any, any discussion?
I have a question on the level-three volunteers. I know that there was some discussion about treating them more like the process in which we hire an employee or they're not employees. And has anything to resolve with that?
Level-three volunteers.
Because right now they're on the consent. I think that was a discussion from the last meeting. Is that what you're referencing?
Man.
So that would be up to the board, how they, how they want to go about approving level-three volunteers.
I believe it was Mr. Tippett that brought up the idea of having a different type of approval.
Yeah, I think we could, if I remember correctly, I think we talked about doing it enclosed. If we can do that in closed session, Ms. Cornada?
If we're going to be discussing individuals' qualifications, yes.
I think that's what we discussed, doing the level-three enclosed session with, with some, a little bit of background on them or something. Even though we don't look at every teacher that comes in, we don't look at all their backgrounds. I mean, it, it is what it is.
But we, but we do get a list of them, of the teachers.
Yeah, you have a list here. These are, these are handled just like substitutes in our schools are handled and all of that. These people go through the same, they apply, they have background checks, they have references. They're handled just like substitute teachers in our school.
Thank you, that was my question.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of items on the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye? Aye, all opposed? Thank you. Dr. King?
Good afternoon, board members. Tonight, CIA has a number of items. We're going to begin. We're going to begin tonight with a very brief discussion of a new contract, Lexia English contract. Be joined by our, by our Accountability and Programs Officer, Ms. Kristy Stevenson, who will brief, speak briefly about the Lexia English contract.
Good evening, board members. With me, I have our executive director of our title programs, federal programs, and she's going to speak to you about Lexia English. This is a program that we would like to purchase with ESAR funds, specifically targeting and working with our students on their language acquisition skills. Language acquisition, or EL progress, as it's known in the accountability model, is an area of focus for our district and so I'm going to turn it over to Faitha.
Good evening, board. I just want to share with you about Lexia English. This is a computerized program for students. We're going to target specifically grades three through six, students that have low proficiency scores in listening and speaking. If you know much about the ML population, you know that they do not often speak out for their own voice to be heard, whether that's in the classroom or sometimes it's more so socially. But we are looking at that academic language that helps students perform well on their WEED assessment that happens in the spring. So this program is a, like I said, a digital platform that allows students to navigate through on pathways so that they can better their language acquisition skills and show their proficiency in those areas, specifically listening and speaking. There are two other areas that the program can address and that would be acceptable. But because we're trying to be strategic and intentional with these students to show their scores, especially at the third through sixth grade level, we're looking at the speaking and listening areas for this program. The recommendation is that this would be purchased for $145,000 from ESAR funds.
Okay, this, I was trying to read it, this is an action item. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
I have a motion from Mr. Carroll, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tippett, any discussion?
Is this something that we're going to be able to use after ESAR funds are extinguished? Or is this, or is this is something that will be used for a number of years?
It will be specifically for this year and then we will consider what other funds are available to continue that, yes, sir.
Just a one-year contract.
So as a parent with a fourth grader and sixth grader, I was just asking, we already have, we already have Lexia, right? So this is for the ESL portion of Lexia.
Correct, that is correct. Our multilingual learners specifically.
We, and I know our goal is a 4.8 proficiency score for our students in this program and I'm assuming that we're having difficulty getting them to this, to this level and so you're hoping that this, your, your idea is this program based on its information would help us to reach that mark?
The 4.8 allows students to exit the program and we have some students who are considered long-term ELS. They start kindergarten in the program and they just do not make the proficiency or growth that we're looking for. So by targeting specific areas of the WEED assessment, we're hoping that that would improve. Speaking is a big area that just they do not tend to score well.
Right, and, and maybe just for the sake of everybody, take thirty seconds and explain that WEED is given to students as they enter on, enter our school system.
In thirty seconds, so they're screened and they're identified for the ESL program. They get services from the ESL teachers and support at various levels. And then every spring, they are assessed on their language skills in those four domains, speaking, reading, listening, and writing. And they have to score a composite score, they put all those together for a composite score. 4.8 or better, they are, then exited from the program. But as long as they are not making that score, that 4.8 that Ms. Andrews talked about, they are continuing in the program until they reach success at that level. So services continue and they are, they remain in the ESL program, which also in our district, our numbers are growing for our ESL population. So we're about 4,100 right now, which is more than we've, we've had over the last three years that I can speak of.
Any other?
You go ahead. Okay, so the Lexia that is out right now, the kids can access at home. Will these kids also have the access at home so they can work on it, you know, if they're at the house and, you know, so?
Yes, they will be able to access it at home if they have accessibility. This program was used last summer when we did the, the summer bridge program for MLs and we saw success with students moving through lessons, which is the goal, that you want them, it doesn't matter how much time they spend, although there's a recommendation, but they, we want them to get through the lesson so that they improve their skills. So we saw some success there with the MLs that attended that camp and we're hoping that will continue throughout the district this year.
Just a quick question from me. I know I've talked to you, Faitha, Ms. Stevenson, Ms. Kike and all about improving access testing scores. Kristy, can you talk about the impact of access testing scores on ELG performance? If, if there is? You can, you're already ahead of me, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? As I said, this is an action item, so I'll entertain a vote to purchase the Lexia English program for our students. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Seven oh, thank you. Now for the information.
Actually, board members, with your permission, I'm going to do what I always do to you and ask you for your permission to skip around a little bit. I know that we are going to do some information items, but we do have one more action item, that is the preschool curriculum materials item. Like to get that one done out of order so that you can give your full attention to the data item, which will come up. And we're actually going to do one more before that one as well. So at this point, I'm going to ask our preschool coordinator, Dr. Faith Jackson, to join us at the podium, who'll talk quickly about preschool curriculum materials.
Hi.
You'll be able to operate, and you need to hold the mic for you?
No, sir, I'll figure it out.
Are you sure?
I'm pretty independent.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. This is to request the purchase of classrooms alive for our preschool classrooms. We have currently forty-eight classrooms across the district. We are currently on all elementary school campuses at this time. The population that we have as of, this morning when I checked, it is about, is right at 600 pre-K students. So that's also 600 families that this potentially would be touching. This program allows our teachers to use 3D or augmented reality to teach the kids 26 different letters, but also associated with each letter is an animal for each letter. And so it's a neat way to bring the letters and bring the animals alive for our students to hopefully increase their engagement and interest in wanting to learn. This program is really striking and the reason why I would like, like to have this program for our classrooms is that it has the potential to become a core all on its own because it does teach ELA as well as SEL, science, and math. And currently, we do not have a science and math explicit learning curriculum for our preschool classrooms. And so that component, while it's done in centers, it's done in different ways across the district. It's not done as one particular way in all classrooms. And so if, if a student were to move during this school year, they might, would experience these kind of centers over at this school, but then these kind of centers at that school. So this would be able to form a consistency and provide that continuity across the district. It also comes with these books that would go home with the families and if the family has access to a smartphone, to any type of device, they can download a free app and utilize these. I played around with this a little bit today and they chase the letters and, they can chase the letters and if they don't get the process where they do the STEM first and then go around, it'll say try again. And so it, it provides kind of errorless type learning for them on devices. It is technology-based, however, it is technology-based where when you buy it, it's yours. It is appable, so it's done with an app. So once you have it, we would, there's not a reoccurring expense other than these handbooks that we would use as our home connection with our families.
This is an action item, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Donovan, do I have a second?
Second.
Any, a second by Mr. Wooton, any discussion?
So you mentioned the letters that are going to be brought to life and stuff, but then you mentioned science and math. What does the app do for science and math?
The math, so the math part is those letters end up becoming, the animals follow along with the letters and then they can create the, like, different processes of the, the, the numbers, but then also using the animals to help build the different shapes. And so it's, it's for preschool. So it's circle, square, triangle, rectangle, rhombus, trapezoid, and hexagon. In the demonstration that I saw, like, you put these cards, the teacher will be able to put these cards underneath, like, kind of something like this, but it's a document camera essentially. And there might be five peacocks and so you're saying five peacocks plus two cheetahs and those peacocks and those cheetahs will come on the screen. And then they can, if they add, they can add them and it'll come up with the number. But they change the add card to a subtraction, it'll also do that and those, those cheetahs will go away. And so it's, it's a neat, it kind of, it, it's amazing to watch.
So it's really sort of the augmented reality that is the draw on this.
Ma'am.
Will this take the place of information? Because I appreciate you, before we finish that agenda review, you had the tables full in the Living Legends Room of material and I've had a chance to come back over here and look at that. But is this going to replace other things that you already have?
In our, the classes that teach NC pre-K, we are bound by NC pre-K and our partnership with the Partnership for Children, which we served ninety-six NC pre-K students this year. We are bound to use creative curriculum with them. And so that is a lot of our classes, but that is not all of our classes. We have our classes that are separate setting that would have the flexibility to use this instead of creative curriculum or use a mixture of it. We also have classrooms that do not have NC pre-K kids and they still are blended because they have other different ways that kids can get into our classrooms, but that they don't have NC pre-K, so they could use this for core instead of the other. And we would have, we do a beginning of the year training every year and we train throughout the school year as well. And so we would work with our teachers and work with their individual classrooms as to what would be best for their students.
Okay.
I have a concern that you, these, this level learner is only allowed 20 minutes of any type of screen time. That, that includes a smart board, any sort of visual aid or technology in the classroom. And we have teachers that have already accommodated that 20 minutes to a lot of different things inside their classroom. If you move in, in place this thing, the teachers then have to pick and choose or, or eliminate other things inside their classroom. I am concerned that we are taking autonomy away from some of our teachers if we bought this particular curriculum. I'm also concerned that we're putting more emphasis on to the screens in terms of learning when a lot of these little tiny learners really need that tactile type learning, the hands-on stuff. I'm not against a science and math curriculum, I just don't know that this is the right one.
Okay, thank you.
We, we discussed the screen time, what is your answer to that? Because we, you know, we, this was brought up in the agenda review.
So a lot of our classrooms, some of our classrooms use the screens that they have to do calendar or to do group work and this would then have to change how they look at that time. There are also some of our classrooms that have like a technology center. And so in that technology center, they might be doing ABC Mouse or PBS Kids type things. And so this would be needing to take that time, yes. Our classroom, this would be a structured and a learning activity versus just a free-for-all, I'm going to hit some buttons until, as a kid, that I'm able to do something. It would take some training on our teachers' perspective. A, they have to train the kids on how to use this and how to interact with this. But it also is something that, that my teachers are used to doing. We have a beginning of the year and, and the pre-K teachers are hungry for solid curriculum that they actually enjoy. We showed this just as a preview of something that we would possibly. We showed this just as a preview of something that we would possibly be able to get. I wanted to get some initial reactions from our teachers. And um, they were excited about this. In fact, one of the teachers in particular does not have NC pre-K. And he said, can I use this instead of that? And I said, if that's what you want to do for your classroom, we will work with you to do that. And so um, it's not gonna be the all be all for all. It's not. But I know um, a lot of people cringed in our department when we brought on the Spot Curriculum, Hegarty and Tell Me. And now they love it and wouldn't want to do classroom without it.
So I think adding this program, is it gonna take away from anything?
I do not think it will take away. I think it will foster more imagination, more excitement in our classrooms. The home um, connection piece is just so unique. We have not, we can send home worksheets, but for our pre-K kids, worksheets are just a piece of paper that they color on. You know, sending something home like this that our teacher, that our parents can um, download the app, scan the app and then give it to their child, and they're like tracing letters that they did in class. Um, and just implementing things that um, most families don't have uh, the know-how or the access to. And I apologize for not having these over here sooner. I just got them in the mail today.
Can you talk on the SEL portion of it as well?
Um, so the SEL portion comes in when uh, for instance, like if they wanted to interact with um, Amos the Alligator. That's his name. Amos the Alligator is his name. Um, they can go up to the screen, they can pet the alligator, they can um, you know, feed the alligator. They can do all those things. They cannot take a selfie with the alligator. And so today, before coming over here, like I had the, I had a cheetah that was on my um, keyboard. And I was able to take a picture of it. But if I had gotten there, it, it, it would not allow me to take a self, like I could not have turned the camera around to do a selfie. So the t- the classroom, the kids are gonna have to interact with one another. So they're gonna be building friendships, building relationships, talking about the different. There's a map that comes with the package that um, they can display on their boards or on their walls that show the different places that these animals come from and where they live at. So that's where a lot of the, the science, possibly even some social studies, depending upon how far the, the teachers want to take it. This is, like, has specific lessons, and so does creative curriculum. But creative curriculum is, is, is been around forever. And it's um, it's more, the teachers have to, they, they are used to using their imagination because they have to use their imagination with that program. It does not just, you know, until we created the pacing guide, it was kind of, they had a box and they were just told to go and, and decide what they wanted to teach. And so um, I came from a smaller county back when I used to teach. And um, I was put in an Extended Content Standards classroom and they didn't, they handed everybody else a pacing guide, but not the Extended Content Standards. So I made my own pacing guide. So that's what we did for our teachers this year. And so um, I don't know if you went in the table, but each curriculum has a pacing guide with it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the purchase of the preschool curriculum material, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Five to.
We appreciate you prioritizing preschool. Thank you.
I didn't realize, I didn't realize, Dr. Jackson, we didn't have those pacing guides for you in Sampson County.
Well, well played, Doc. Alright, board members, at this, at this time, we're gonna ask our, excuse me, Curriculum and Instruction Officer, um, Ms. Anna Kikekandall to join us, and she will discuss uh, briefly our um, School Improvement Plan Review and uh, Approval Process. Is the presentation not there?
Good evening, board members. So we are gonna discuss pretty quickly, because I know I'm standing between you all on the awesome data review that we're getting ready to have, um, the process for creating the school improvement plans for each school in Johnston County Public Schools. And Dr. Thomas, who you all know as our Executive Director of School Improvement and Support, does lead this process. As you all know, each public school in North Carolina is required to have a school improvement plan per general statute that is outlined in presentation that was shared with you all. And as the school board, you all will either accept or reject each school improvement plan. And in Johnston County Public Schools, we have three district expectation for goal design within each school improvement plan. So one of the goals has to focus on overall achievement, which of course relates to EOG or EOC proficiency outcomes. One goal must focus on subgroup performance, and one goal must focus on social emotional learning. While the expectation is that all schools design and implement these three goals, there is the option of adding a fourth goal, as determined by either the Area Assistant Superintendent, our District Superintendent, or the School Improvement Team. So for example, one of our elementary schools, Selma Elementary, has a unique context where dual language is a critical component of their school culture. So their fourth goal focuses on the successes attained in the listening and speaking skills of their second grade students. And while each school improvement plan is individually tailored to fit the need of each school, our district has put structures in place to make sure that schools have the proper support to create goals that will transform learning for all of our kids. To that end, some structures that have been put into place at the district level include summer data and school improvement planning sessions with all forty-eight of our schools, district-wide professional learning and development aligned to school needs, and finally, district-wide support and monitoring of those school improvement efforts. The implementation and the monitoring of each school's improvement plan does occur at the school level through that school improvement team that also creates the school improvement plan and then carries it out. The district also provides ongoing feedback and support through superintendent data review session with principals, coaching and feedback support through the School Improvement Support Team, and through CIA walkthrough and feedback visits. You all can review all of the school improvement plans in three different ways. You should have received your school improvement binders that were curated for each of you, so you all have those paper copies. You can also access the Bitly, that's part of the presentation that was shared with you all, and you can access them also through each school's website directly. These plans are detailed and lengthy, and so we wanted to give you all plenty of time to review them before the October Board Meeting, which is when you all will vote on the plans. So if you have any questions while you're reviewing those plans, please don't hesitate to reach out to either me or Dr. Thomas. And so if you don't have any questions, I thank you for your time.
I thank you. We, I was, I ha- I'm very transparent. I was a little concerned because I'm thinking, oh my gosh, are we voting on these today?
No, 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 no.
And I had, I mean, I have my notebook here, but I, I'm not that fast a reader, but.
This is just informational.
Right, right. I thought it was, and I knew Dr. King wouldn't leave me out there like that. But um, but we appreciate your work in getting this together for us. Everybody should have a notebook and just check out your schools. And as you know, on October third, we will hear from those uh, low-performance schools, and we'll, we'll be ready in October.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I am glad to see one of the um, baseline targets, we have a percentage point. Or as we all know, what our goal is, rather than just, so I'm gonna try to improve. So I, Dr. Bracy, I love five percent, unless you wanna make it ten percent.
Sounds good to me.
No, uh, but, but you know, going in, we all know where we want to be, or you know, this is a minimum of what we want to do. So I think that I congratulate you on a percentage.
Thank you, sir.
I want to thank you also for issuing us binders with a, a hard copy. It's so much easier to go through and read and notate, so thank you.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Thank you all so much.
So that is each board member's responsibility between now and October. Alright.
Board members, thank you so much for your indulgence. Have I, as I have completely, I'm sure confused everyone in terms of the order of presentations tonight. But we did wanna uh, get ourselves uh, to a place where we could uh, uh, give you all the time that you would like to uh, interact with this summative data review. Of course, as you know, every year we come to you at the end of uh, the school year. And after the State Board of Education um, has done its work and shared uh, finalized official data uh, with us. Uh, and we come to you each year around this time and to provide our summative data review. As we come to you this year, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, uh, summative data review, we are excited to share with you uh, that you will find that we have continued to make progress across the district. Uh, we continue uh, to see our students improving um, academically. Uh, and that improvement uh, is taking place, we feel like, uh, across the district in um, in uh, both uh, K-five uh, middle school and high schools. Uh, and so we are excited tonight to be able to provide to you a detailed report um, of the outcomes that our students uh, and staff uh, have uh, achieved this school year. Our uh, Accountability and Program Officer, Ms. Kristi Stevenson, will come forward at this time and share all of the data uh, with you.
Good evening. I'm excited to be here tonight. We do have a lot, a lot to celebrate in Johnston County. Um, we had our press release last Friday where we recognized um, some of our most improved and outstanding work done by our students as well as our teachers. Um, a couple of data highlights here. We did um, improve our com- our performance composite. And that performance composite is our percent of students showing grade level proficiency. So that level, at least that level three, including our level fours and fives, across all tests. So we improved that by two percentage points. So um, we continue to remain and climb above our pre-pandemic proficiency. We had thirty-five schools improve their performance composite. And uh, Mr. Carroll, you alluded to Dr. Bracy's five percentage point challenge that he gives our schools. We had thirteen at meet that, that rate, so kudos to those schools. Um, twenty-nine schools exceeded growth, and that equates to sixty percent of our schools. And that's, that's a phenomenal number. I'll talk a little bit more about that number later. And we had eight of our schools actually improve a full letter grade. So we had four move from a D to a C, and then four move from a C to a B. So when you think about our goal as a district, um, all of our schools reaching that A, B or C by the end of this school year, um, we are eight schools away from meeting that goal. And I feel like we will get there. Um, this graphic here just shows that um, performance trend over time. You'll notice we're actually above not only the state, but we are above where we were in the, not just our pre-COVID year, but where we were in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. You'll notice, so this accountability model's been in place for, for ten years. That fifty-nine point two is our peak, where we were um, the highest we've ever been under this accountability mo- model. So we haven't quite gotten back there yet, but we are well on our way. This graphic is pretty much that same data. I've just added in um, how we rank um, across in comparison to all hundred and fifteen uh, school districts. We continue to rank at the forty-first um, at, in position forty-one. So I want to talk a little bit about our grade spans. Um, looking at elementary there, you can see our performance trend. You'll notice in reading, math, as well as science, we saw uh, continued improvements and uptick there. When you put all of that together, um, it's about a three percent increase overall. Our most significant improvement was seen in grade three reading, an increase of six point one percent. And grade four math, an increase of five point two percent. We are above the state um, average in all grade levels and all subjects at our elementary level. So kudos to those elementary folks. Um, taking a look at middle school, we did see a decline last year in middle school. Overall, we dropped by about two percentage points. Um, our science uh, was the most um, significant drop there. But I will note that across the state, eighth grade science saw a decrease as well. Um, our math pretty much held steady, and our reading also showed a decline. I will, um, that decline was seen mainly in sixth and eighth grades. Our seventh grade reading and math did show improvement. Taking a look at high school, our high school EOC subjects, um, Math One, Math Three, Biology and English, all showed gains there. As a collective group, um, overall, that high school was the area where we saw the most improvement. Overall, five percentage jump. Um, you'll see that our, our Math Three um, kind of didn't see as much jump as our other three EOCs, but nonetheless, it did show improvement. Um, we recognize though, high school, this is still a continued opportunity of focus for us. We s- we are still below the state average, but we're on the right track. So we're heading in the right direction. We are starting to close the gap with the state, but we recognize we, this is an opportunity for us. Taking a look at our subgroups, you'll notice, um, and if you, I've highlighted the two green. So if you'll kind of focus on those two green bars, um, the, kind of the uh, the green on the right is um, our most current year. And the second green bar there from the left is pre-COVID. Um, th- but this is a subgroup breakdown in how each of our subgroups are performing. And you'll notice that all of our subgroups are growing. All are back or surpassed where we were um, in two thousand uh, eighteen, nineteen, before COVID, which is tremendous. And you'll see some, some subgroups, like our black subgroup, they are well above where we were pre-COVID. So it's just good stuff. Alright, we also, um, I think it was the May Board Meeting, or it might have been the June Board Meeting, I can't remember. But I know Dr. King made mention that we would um, bring to you the impact of retesting. And so he, uh, we've, we've retested for two years. Um, so I've got our twenty-one, twenty-two, as well as our twenty-two, twenty-three data. Um, and you can see, I've broken it, I've broken it out by our EOG as well as our end-of-course assessments. Our proficiency prior to retesting, you'll see for this year was uh, we were, we came in at fifty-four percent. We've retested, now, when that says number of retests, that does not mean students. That means number of tests. So you can have a student, if I'm a fifth grader, I could potentially have to take three tests. Our, so you can see, we, we retested just over five thousand this year, which is significantly less than what we did previous year. But our percent proficient on those retests was about the same. The impact on our scores this year was an increase of two point seven points, which took our overall EOG composite to fifty-six point seven. When you look at our EOCs, you'll notice this year, we did um, give more uh, tests in our EOC subjects. Our proficiency rate um, on those retests was lower than the previous year. We were at about twenty percent. But the impact that it did have on our overall proficiency was one point four points, taking that proficiency composite up to fifty percent. And keep in mind, I know that five thousand three hundred seventy-two looks like a lot, but when we're talking end-of-grade test, we give about forty thousand assessments and twelve thousand when it comes to EOC. So we're giving, a lot of tests are going on at the end of the year. But that was our impact on retesting. Cohort graduation rate, so in a moment, I'm gonna move into talking about school performance grades. And our cohort graduation rate is a measure of the percent of students who graduate within four years. So once I enter ninth grade for the first time, my clock starts ticking. So this is a measure of how many students graduate within the four years. And it is an indicator, it is part of the school performance grade calculation for our high schools. You'll notice here, as tradition in Johnston County. You'll notice here, as tradition in Johnston County, we are above the state average rate. And you'll see that the state rate, it held steady and we, we did drop by two tenths of a point. So we pretty much held steady too. All right. So I want to talk a little bit about growth. When we talk about school performance grades, that is based off of an eighty-twenty model. Eighty percent comes from achievement, which is that EOG data that, and EOC data that I just shared. It's also for high school graduation rates, things like math course rigor, which is a measure of the percent of students that pass math three or pass the course, not necessarily the assessment. It also looks at things like ACT and work keys, and I'll talk a little bit about that later on. And also EL progress, which is what Dr. Bracy wants me to speak on, and I will in a few minutes. The other twenty percent is, comes from growth. And the state of North Carolina partners with SAS to calculate an EVOs growth measure. And the best way, I think, to understand growth is to think about it in terms of running a race. The expectation is that you maintain your spot in that race or your place in line when running the race. So compared to how other schools across the state did, as it relates to how our students are similar to other kids across the states in terms of, of their testing history, how did we pace? Did we keep that relative position? If so, then we've met growth. Did we outpace other grade levels or subjects? Then we exceed. And if we lose our place in line and back up, then we don't meet expected growth. When you look here at our growth, you see we had sixty percent exceed twenty-three meet. So that's eighty-three percent of our schools met or exceeded their expected growth. We had, pre-pandemic, we had sixty percent meeting growth and twenty-two percent, no, I'm sorry, sixty percent total meeting and exceeding. And now we're at eighty-three meeting and exceeding. The state is at seventy-two percent meeting and exceeding. When you break that out and look across all two thousand five hundred and ninety-five schools throughout North Carolina that have a growth measure, we have twenty-one of our schools in the top twenty percent. And they'll be recognized Thursday at our celebration. And we have ten of those twenty-one in the top ten percent of the state. So that, that's amazing, guys. Yeah, well, yeah. Yes, yes, sir.
That first dial there, two seventeen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. If you look at that dial and compare it to this year's dial, I, I think it's important to note, you know, what that, what that says to me on that graphic is that, you know, we have fundamentally changed the project, the trajectory of student achievement in this school district over the last six years. If, if, if it's, if you, if you understand this growth notion, the way I always think about it is, growth means how many students who received a year of instruction received a year of improvement at any level, right? And if you look at two thousand eighteen, what that number tells you is that, at that time, only twenty-nine percent of students in this district received a year of improvement after a year of classroom instruction. Today, that number is eighty-three percent, right? That is, I, I would argue a statistically significant change in the trajectory of students in Johnston County public schools.
The complete one-eighty, yeah. And here are our twenty-nine schools that exceeded growth. And again, they will be celebrated on, on Thursday. So then when we take a look, like I said, that growth piece counts as twenty percent of the overall school performance grade with the other eighty coming from achievement indicators. And if we take a look here at how our A, Bs, and Cs, because that's what we're trying to get to, across the state, the state has sixty-five percent of the schools at a A, B, or C. We're sitting at eighty-three percent of our schools at that A, B, or C there. So again, we're improving. Our goal is to reduce or up, I'm sorry, totally eliminate Ds and Fs. And you can see when that, when that goal was, was put in place, we were sitting at fourteen, fifteen, thirteen plus two in two thousand eighteen, nineteen. We were sitting at fifteen D or F schools. We've eliminated the Fs and on our way to eliminating the Ds. So we're well on our way there.
How close are we? We, we've been steady at two schools at A for years. Where, where are we in putting more schools into A?
We, we've got a little bit of work to do. When you, when you think about the, the cutoff, it's a fifteen-point scale. We have, so when we look at our B schools, and I'm, I just wanted to double check before I speak, we, they are sitting, our closest school to moving to an A is sitting at an eighty right now. So they're five points away. Our other schools are, are in the, in mid-seventies. So we do have some work, but we, we've, in talking with our schools, we've got some biting, biting to get that A. Yep.
One of the things that we know, because we've been doing across the state some work around this model, this A, B.
One of the things that we, we know, when we, when we think about this model of performance grades in North Carolina, when you think about where, where we sit, what we've learned over the last year and a half is that North Carolina's model is extremely punitive compared to other states across the nation who have ranking models. For instance, in North Carolina, Christie, what'd you say the number of A, Bs, and Cs is? I think, uh, sixty-seven percent. Most, most states that have these models have the overwhelming majority of their schools as As, Bs, and Cs, whereas North Carolina's model has most of our schools towards the bottom.
Great example, Dr. King, is Florida.
It's Florida. And I, I think the number of A, Bs, or Cs in Florida is somewhere around the eighty-five mark. And so the, the, when we think about where our schools are performing and we put them in the context of, of the, of the entire nation, our students, our students are really doing a strong job in terms of, in terms of their performance and in terms of these schools' performance grades.
So you're saying that if it wasn't eighty-twenty, it was more like fifty-fifty, it'd be a completely different model, correct?
Way higher. North Caroli, the, right. Earning an A, B, and C, A, B, or C in North Carolina is significantly more difficult.
Fifty proficiency and fifty growth, right?
Right.
And we've been asking for that for years.
Well, and kind of having worked on that committee over the last year, I can tell you that that is something that was the kind of unanimous request of, of everybody who was involved in that process. Unfortunately, we, we certainly, we still didn't get it. But, but it is, and it is, again, it's significantly more difficult to achieve this level of performance in the North Carolina system.
So looking at our schools, we had thirty-six schools to maintain that school performance grade. As I mentioned at the beginning, we had eight schools show a positive shift. So moving to a B was Cleveland High, Micro, North Johnston High, and Pine Level. And then moving from a D to a C was Cooper Academy, Triple S, Wes Clayton, and Wes Smithfield. We did have three schools that slipped back a letter grade. Moving from a B to a C was Archer's Lodge, a B to a D was Riverwood, and a C to a D was Four Oaks Middle. So when we, when we take that and then we apply the definition for low-performing schools, the state sets that definition as any D or F school that has a growth score of meets or not meets. So when you look at from twenty-two to twenty-three, you'll notice that we had Triple S come off of our low-performing schools list. Wes Clayton and Wes Smithfield came off as well. However, because of that growth, we had some schools shift from exceeds, which if you're a D school and you're exceeding growth, you're not low-performing. We did have some of our schools, though they remained a D, their growth shifted. And so now they are on the low-performing schools list. And you can see that list of our six low-performing schools now. And as has been mentioned, those schools will be presenting their school improvement plans to you October third, I believe it is. Is that right? Taking a look around the state, and I apologize, this is a little bit hard to see where it is for me. Looking at Johnston County in comparison to the ten largest districts, because we are part of that Big Ten. If you look at the ten largest districts as well as our neighboring districts, I've added them there at the bottom, a couple of things that I think is kind of cool to look at. I want to say what stands out to you, but when, when I look at that pre-pandemic comparison, what does stand out to you there? Anything?
There's only one positive.
There's only one positive, and that's us, y'all. So when we think about that, that's, I think that's an exciting statistic. We are actually one of six districts across the state that has gotten back to their pre-pandemic proficiency. So that's awesome. Also, when we look there at the percent of schools exceeding growth, you see that sixty there? There's only two others in the county, in the state that exceed that sixty percent mark. So that's, that's awesome. All right. I also pulled and looked at our, at, at the, our three charters within Johnston County. And these are the three that most of our students go to. When you look here, now you'll notice proficiency-wise, our proficiency is below where theirs is. We are more in line with ALA there. But when you look at growth, and one, and one thing I do need to mention, the, the district does not get a growth index. We don't get a, a district performance grade. That's only for schools. So when I was trying to do some comparisons, I pulled what their growth index was and I just made a note of how many of our schools are actually above the growth index indicated there. So when we're looking at News Charter, they had a growth index of minus point five-one. So they met. Now, growth between negative two and positive two is an index of meets. We had thirty-eight schools exceeding the growth of News Charter. ALA, all of our schools exceeded the growth exhibited by, by News Charter. And, A, yeah, what did I say? I'm sorry, ALA. I apologize. And then Johnston Charter, we had thirty-three schools achieve a growth index greater than the one point two-four. When you look at school performance grades, we had, and I compared that sixty-seven. So that C of sixty-seven for News Charter, we had nineteen schools above that. When you look at fifty-five for ALA, we had thirty-eight of our schools above that. And then when you look Johnston Charter, which I do want to make note is a K-eight school. It does not have high school. We had twelve schools perform above, above that right there. I want to shift just a little bit. We've been talking a lot about EOGs and EOCs and school performance grades. A piece of data that is not included in that accountability model is our early literacy assessment. Now, this data is part of teacher effectiveness growth data, but it's not part of the calculation for school performance grades. But you've probably heard in the news where, you know, our superintendent, state superintendent has been talking about the progress being made across reading. So I took the data that the State Department had shared for North Carolina and we put Johnston County's data beside it. If you'll notice in our K three, and this is, this is looking at our M-class data. So the percent of students meeting benchmark on M-class. You'll notice in kindergarten, the blue's JCPS and the green is North Carolina. You'll notice for kindergarten, at that first benchmark last year, we were behind the state. But we caught up and we are equal with the state. When you look at first and second grade, you'll notice we, again, we started a little behind at the beginning of the year, but we caught up and surpassed the state. And then in third grade, again, we were above the state. And if you'll remember, I said the most improved area for our elementary on EOGs was third grade reading. So the work that our K two is doing is only gonna help us because, I mean, that, that data is supportive of great things to come. Talking about read to achieve, which that's the state legislation that wants all students proficient in reading or, or reach the reading proficiency standard by the end of third grade. This is a breakdown of, and there, and I should say, there's a couple of ways a student can, can demonstrate proficiency. It's just not on the EOG. So as a third grader, I can demonstrate proficiency through my EOG. I can demonstrate proficiency through my M-class data. I can demonstrate proficiency through portfolio. But if you look in this past year, at the end of the year, we had eighty-one point nine percent of our students reaching that proficiency goal or having a good cause exemption. So we are below where we were pre-pandemic. But again, when you look at our trend, we're on the right track. Students that went to reading camp had another opportunity to demonstrate proficiency. We had two hundred and sixty-nine students that attended our reading camp, which was fifty, right at fifty-four percent of the students that were eligible to attend. So we had fewer students attending reading camp. And over reading camp, we had a, a rate of about twenty-four percent of those students that attended became proficient. So they reached that proficiency mark and that took our total percentage of students meeting the standard to eighty-four point three percent. So we have fewer students this year in our three, four transition class because the students that don't demonstrate proficiency. because the students that don't demonstrate proficiency are, are placed in a three-four transition class for additional support in fourth grade. So, right at fifteen percent this year in the three-four transition. This is a quote that I used last year. I just like this quote. It says, "Excellence is not a destination. It's a continuous journey that never ends." So, we've seen a lot of growth and success this year. But we know we've not arrived and we, we're not going to arrive because you always are there looking to how can we tweak? How can we be more strategic? How can we be more intentional? It's a continuous improvement journey. So, in thinking about that, we do have some areas of opportunity. So, EL progress, which Faitha came and talked a little bit about. One of the indicators for that school performance grade is a measure of how are our students progressing in terms of their language acquisition skills. So, when an EL student takes that access test for the first time, they get an initial score. That score then sets their trajectory. They may have five years to exit, four years to exit, three years, and so on. If students, so let's say I take the test and it says, okay, Kristy should exit in five years. Each year, when I take that access again, I have a target score. If I hit that target score and I'm showing I'm on track to exit in five years, then I count positively towards EL progress. If I exit either on time, so within my five years, if I either exit on time or before I hit that four-point-eight that you talked about, then I count positively towards EL progress. You'll notice in that last line, you can see our trend. We're showing improvement, but we're not there yet. This is an opportunity for us. So, thank you for approving the program, that, that A program that we feel will support our English learners there. You also, I think, under consent approved our elevations. Within elevations, there are PD modules to help not only our EL teachers, but the regular ed teachers, because this doesn't just lie on the EL teacher's shoulders. This is a, a cross-curricular. How in our core classes are we supporting English learners? How are we supporting that language acquisition skills? And through elevations, there are some PD modules that teachers can take there. So, we recognize EL progress as an area for improvement. Also, I've already talked about our middle schools, how we took a dip there as well as, so we, so we've got some, some focus areas for our middle schools identified as well as our high school achievement. Moving in the right direction, when we talk about growth, we know we're moving in the right direction because we've had more schools exceed, high schools exceed growth this year than we've had since twenty-fifteen, twenty-fifteen. So, I, I'm excited about that, too. ACT. So, when we look at our ACT composite there, our ACT, if you'll remember last year, I talked to you about how they changed the, the composite standard. They raised it from a seventeen to a nineteen. So, that's part of the reason we saw that dip from twenty-one to twenty-two. But you'll notice from twenty-two to twenty-three, we showed some improvement, but we're, we're pretty flat-lined. This is a snip of, of the past four years of our, our data compared to the state. Now, I've got the composite there on the end, but you can see in each of the subtests, English Math, Reading, and Science, you see we are below the state average there. So, again, high school, not only in our EOCs, but across all core areas. Looking at raising the rig, how are we raising the rigor in our high school classes? So, we can see a shift here. And we've got some strategies in place this year. Mastery Prep is being used. That's an ACT preparedness program that our schools are using with more intentionality this year. But, you know, beyond that, it really goes to that instructional monitoring and feedback. So, when we're talking about continuous improvement, these are just a couple of items that we're, we're looking at and, and that we've implemented or continue to implement this year. We continue to meet either monthly or on a quarterly basis, depending upon school need, to review data, instructional monitoring and feedback. You know, this, you remember last, last year, you approved for us to adopt the Avid College and Career Readiness Framework. A piece of that is real, is, is insisting on rigor for, in our classrooms because students need to be exposed to rigorous coursework. So, focusing on those high-yield instructional practices or WICR strategies is a big push this year in our PD. Continuing to implement our core curriculums. You know, bringing those cores on has, has given us that, that focus that we need to get the results that I, I would say we've, we've gotten and the, see the growth that we've got. And also a more intentional focus on progress monitoring. We've got our benchmarks that we use as temperature checks. But in between that, our schools are utilizing Common Formative Assessments, quick checks that have been developed by the county or their own, like I said, Common Formatives, to assess standards as they are teaching to make sure that the kids get it or not get it. And then our continued focus on our literacy instruction through the implementation of letters as well as, you know, support of our, with, through, with our elementary learning facilitators to provide our elementary schools that additional supports. So, that's just some things that, that we're doing to continue on that journey for, of continuous improvement. Questions?
First of all, thank you for a wonderful presentation. No, no, I'm just thanking her first.
Oh, thank you as well. But just maybe an offbeat question. When I was going through the agenda, I remember elevation was, did that work with iReady? More so than did, was elevation, did it, it did not?
I don't think that was.
There's two elevations. One is like core support and one is ML or legal support. So, do you know which one you might be speaking of?
No, it was the one I read about, and I was looking at it online, just trying to be sure. And I know we didn't contract, we don't contract with iReady, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I think the one I was looking at was supported by iReady. So, that's why I was just like, being sure we had everything we need. And that question escaped me until now, so I wanted to ask it. No, I'm so good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Um, I, I, I just want to make note of a couple of things. First of all, thank you so much. Just a reminder that, uh, the ACT is a college entrance exam.
Correct.
And all students in North Carolina in the eleventh grade?
Eleventh grade.
Every student must take it. It's a college entrance exam. Every student must take it. So, I'm, I'm glad to see that we're doing some prep because we do that for other college entrance exams. Um, it is a multi-subject assessment, but, and it's also given in the eleventh grade, which can be affected by not having certain courses until your twelfth-grade year. So, I'm just, I just want to say that.
And one thing I do, I, I want to, so two things I'd like to piggyback off of that is when COVID hit, several of our universities said, you, you, you don't have to turn in a college entrance exam. That ends with this class of seniors. College Board has reinstated that. So, some people say, well, kids haven't been taking it seriously because they know they don't have to have it to get in college. But that's fixing to change.
Right.
This, this year's graduating class?
Is still exempt.
Exempt from, uh, okay.
Yeah, but this is.
But the following year juniors will, will have to submit.
Yep, juniors that take it this year. So, they can, that state administration of the ACT can count, or if they take it, you know, on their own. The other thing, in the accountability model, so when we're talking about school performance grades, the ACT, to your point, is a college exam. It is actually coupled with work keys, which is a career readiness. So, for our CTE concentrators, they also take that assessment. So, a student can either demonstrate proficiency for the ACT work keys through either getting that nineteen, or if they're a concentrator, a CTE concentrator, and they take the work keys assessment, earning a silver or better would also count. So, maybe if they missed the mark on ACT, but they get the silver, then they count positively to the school's, that progress indicator for the school.
And that bronze, silver, gold, I mean, that's used by employers for when they hire.
Yes, so silver, the gold or platinum, employers, so kids that achieve, get that can, you know, that, that, you're talking money then when you, when you go to, you know, so.
My, my other comment was on our ESL, ELL, English Language Learners. Um, I'm glad to see that you are, are just making it aware that it is a whole school effort to help these students because I do want to say this, ESL teachers in our school, there is no caseload max for these teachers, if I'm correct. I have a friend who's ESL teacher. She has a hundred and fifty-five kids on her roster, and she's one person. So, it has to be an entire school effort because there's no way one person can handle the language acquisition of a hundred and fifty-five high school kids. So, I just want us to be aware of that, but that, that's, that's the way it is. That's, that, we have what we have, so we have to go with what we have. So, I'm just glad to hear you say that the whole school's got to wrap there. It's got to be a support for this student.
And, and, and that's a growing population in our county. But what's, and, and, and this just isn't a Johnston County thing. It's, it's a state thing. But the, the percent of kids exiting on time is extremely low. We're at seven point two percent compared to the state at six point one. So, what's hap, what happens, though, is, is the snowball effect. So, kids aren't exiting, so they continue on in the program. So, the numbers grow and grow. So, when we, when we get to high school, for years and years and years, we only had one high school that even had this as a indicator. Two years ago, it was Triple S, two years ago Clayton came on. Now Cleveland is coming on. So, it's either, it's either this year or next. If that rate don't change, all of our high schools are going to have that as an indicator. So, we've, we've got to do something to get our kids, you know, building those language acquisition skills. So, so thank y'all for your support in, in helping us do that.
Right, and, and the thing that I noticed, and, and obviously I left, I left an increase to be a whole lot more, but I think when you reach a certain point, that increase is much more difficult, obviously. So, the amount you jump is going to be less each year. Uh, I mean, it was easy, it's easier to go from eighty-something to forty-something than it is to go from forty-something up to twenty now.
Yep.
So, I mean, I think, I think everybody needs to understand that. It is not that, you know, that we may not have as, as bigger percentage points because it is, it is going to take more time and it's going to go slower. The higher up you go, the, the slower it goes.
And you'll see that in growth, too.
Right, and, and cor, correct me if I'm wrong. I know that our, our, our middle school science was, and across the state, was not good. Was that, wasn't that the first year those kids have taken, because they didn't do fifth grade?
Yes, because.
So, we, so we can't compare fifth, those, okay.
And, and that's, that's a conversation several of me and my colleagues in other, because we were all like, what in the world? Because typically your sciences are strong, and we were all like, what in the world happened? And we were like, well, guys, these were the kids, these were the COVID kids in fifth grade. So, I don't know.
Well, there's no basis to compare.
Yeah.
Why, why it went down because we don't have any fifth grade science scores.
Right, right.
Any other comments or questions?
Just want to say, Kristy, it's so much fun watching you present this every year.
Well, well, let's keep it so it stays fun.
It's always good to come tell good news. And we, you know, we are very aware, very aware that we still have room for improvement. Nobody around this horseshoe is, is saying that we've reached the ultimate because we haven't, but we're on the right track.
And I just want to repeat what I said Friday. Thank you to our teachers. Thank you to our school staff. Thank you to our administrators. Thank you to our students, their families, our district staff for these amazing results.
Yeah, and, yeah, I agree, and our, as Dr. Bracy said, I'd like to reiterate that, that if you, I don't know if teachers are watching, but if you are, if you're not, if you're a family member, or if you hear, you know a teacher, tell them thank you. For, tell, tell TAs thank you. Tell the tutors that come into our schools and help our kids because this is not the effort of Johnston County Board of Education. This is the effort of five thousand other individuals and thirty-seven thousand students. This is not, we, we owe them a great deal of thanks. Thank you to this cabinet that's sitting around this table. This is an effort that people have put as a priority, and we're just so very grateful to all of you.
If I could just say one more thing, Madam Chair. While Kristy was presenting, speaking of the cabinet, the two guys that were staring at that TV the hardest were my chief finance officer and my facilities design guy. And that is just beautiful. The guys that have not much to do with teaching and learning, they're all in. And I love that, and I love that about this cabinet and leadership team.
Uh, Dr. King, would you come forward for just a second? I'm not.
We're not giving you any money, Dr. King.
I'm not.
Dr. Bracy, we could talk about that.
This, uh, this, uh, the next thing I'm going to say is not something that I wanted to say, Dr. King. But as we all well know, that you have accepted a position in Durham County, and their gain is our loss. It has been a pleasure to have you stand before us and to explain things to us and help us understand what we needed to do to move forward. And you've got us on the right track, and it's our responsibility to keep it going. But I do wish you the very best in your new endeavor. And I know you have goals for your career and those things, and I hope this allows you to do that. But I am really sorry to see you go. But again, you have built, helped us build the foundation that's going to carry us to success. And I don't think I'll ever think of you, that I don't think of your words in our first gathering, our retreat, and you said, we have to keep the main thing the main thing. And thank you for helping us to, to, to do that. And I appreciate so much your, your commitment to this school district and wish you the very, very best.
Well, thank you so much. It has been, the pleasure has been all mine for us, a boy from Little Ol' Mount Olive, to have a chance to come here and try to help. I hope that our efforts have been helpful, and I, I trust and I know that this school district will continue to move forward in a positive way. So, thank you all so much for, for your confidence and your support over the years. It's been awesome.
Uh, Mr. Moore?
Let's talk about some switchback ramps.
That's right, and by request, I prom, prom, promise I have lots of pictures for you. Not charts and graphs, but pictures and, and, and stuff. And I prom, promise this, this was not, not planned, but there are lots of great things to, to celebrate in this, this district. Great job team and everyone across, across the district. But I wanted, as, as we've been successful in passing bond referendums and funding from, from, from the county with local funds, yes, I, I gave, I gave you all, all a cheat sheet for you, just a summation. Did this thing work for you? I mashed it. There it is. All right. There we go. Okay, so start, starting out with the twenty-eight, eighteen bonds, we only, we have six remaining projects. Four of, four of those, those are right, right at completion, and two are in, in the construction process. But just, just loo, looking back of, for the past, past year, this is that west campus roof replacement. This is, is a twenty, uh, twenty-year warranted roof. And we did have to, we, we did, we did catch it in, in, in time, time that there, there was very minimal. time that there, there was very minimal, um, underlying substrate replacement. And we actu- actually coated some of it instead, instead of re- replace placement, replacing it. So lots, lots of savings there. Uh, catching it in time. This, this is at South Johnston High School. We, um, epoxy coated a lot of bathroom floors and re- replaced numerous doors for that school. Uh, Smithfield Middle, this is the new entrance canopy. Uh, so now, now, now you can really see where the front off, off office is, and it's, it's a covered carpool, drop-off and entrance for, for, for those students. Um, North John- Johnston High, this, this, this was a lot, a lot more than a renovation. That, um, this, this was a significant expansion and, and addition off, off the back of that camp of the cafeteria. Uh, we are going to be able to add, I think it's about two hun- two hundred and twelve more seats. So it would definitely reduce, reduce the amount of lunch periods they have there. And this project finished four months early. Um, it, it was, was a one-year project scheduled for com- completion this Christmas, but they finished four months early and opened it right before, before students came back. Yes, they are coming. There we go. So there's, there's the outside view, view of that expansion. Lots of win- windows, natural light to really enhance that space. Um, Innovation Academy, this is the one, the one that was a, like, just a campus-wide project. We replaced all the old, um, single-pane windows with, uh, curtain wall ins- insulated, lay to gra- glass and, and significantly improved the ther- the thermal e- efficiency of that school. We did provide and con- con- construct a bathroom in the eighth, eighth-grade building. Um, and with that one also is a cafeteria renovation and, uh, kit, kitchen, and also a fire alarm replacement as, as well. So it really en- enhanced and, and re- replaced a lot of things, things across, across that campus. This is a fun, fun one here. This, this was about five-thirty-one morning at Triple S High School. I was out, out there smelling the concrete and looking at the sunrise and just, just enjoying life. Um, so that pro- project is well, well underway. Um, the walls are a- actually going up now. And, um, being that this is the last of the eighteen bond, we are planning a topping-out cer- ceremony. So topping out the building with the roof beam, but then also topping off the eighteen bond. So ought, ought to be an exci- exciting e- event coming sometime roughly the first of November. But, but once, once the schedule allows, based on the delivery and construction activities there, we'll schedule a, a more firm date. Uh, shifting to some, some cap- capital funding, we are grateful for last year, th- this year, much more capital to work, work, work with. So we have been doing, doing a lot of HVAC, like central plant stuff, so chillers, boilers here. Um, we did re- replace the original, um, um, boilers and stuff, stuff there from nineteen ninety-five. Come on, baby. Next slide, please. Uh, some more at Cleveland Ele- Ele- Elementary, chillers there, McGee's Elementary. And, um, uh, we replaced the old fire alarm panel at North Johnston High School that was ob- ob- obsolete. We shared with the town of Smith- Smith- Smithfield, replacing the bo- boilers at the track. Um, and lots of playground and, um, s- s- swing, swing, swing sets. You can see, see a list, list on, on the side. This, this is at Selma. Uh, you can see one here and one als- also, so in the back, background, replaced both, both, both of those. But just a lot of district-wide, um, replacements, replacing slides, platforms, uh, swing sets, all of that. This is, looks like West Clayton. Uh, so lot, lots of features there on that playground. And this is up at Corinth Holders Ele- Elementary, a whole new structure there. Um, and that looks like West Smithfield. So lots of play, playgrounds just district-wide there. Tennis courts, um, at Triple S are just about, about, about done. These are the new, new courts. The courts are, are, are done. We are ac- actually doing, doing those sidewalk and A- ADA improvements there. Uh, so that should be done. Um, I think it's next week, actually. All right. Cle- Cleveland High, High School Track, I got a little info for, for you here. So the picture on the left is what we have. So that is our current, current sub- sub- subgrade. You can see the finds and the disc coloration in it. On the right is what we want, which is a beautifully graded aggregate, um, subgrade with lots of different sizes. So, so it really compacts well. Um, paving, paving at three, three schools, a ma- major one was West Johnston. Uh, there is, is a traffic light, light there, so it, we had, had to, uh, colla- lab, colla- collaborate with the D- DOT on, on those sensor loops and all. But that, that was a significant amount of milling and paving and just, um, striping and seal coat, coating the parking lots and stuff there. McGee's, we paved, paved the bus lot and the bus drive all the way to McGee's M- Middle School. Uh, same for Riverwood, Wood Elementary, and a couple of, um, correcting some drainage issues there with that hill. Um, so some other capital proj- projects, we are starting on the roof for the old, old gym at Clayton High, and a lot of, um, canopies around, around there too, kind of connecting s- some of those, those buildings. Um, a, a big one was just, just a complete district-wide, uh, bleacher project. I think back in March, we, we, we approved, approved for about four hundred thou- thousand dollars to just, just replace seat boards, the fencing around, make sure, sure everything was code, come, come, apply ADA, ADA space, spaces for wheelchairs, all of that. Uh, re- recently, we, uh, purchased and will soon, soon install the extra, um, bleachers on the vi- visitor side of our six middle school, school gyms. Um, met recently, recently with Public Pu- Pu- Public Utilities and their, uh, consultant a- a- about starting that forced main project from Corinth, Corinth Holders Elementary and taking out the old, uh, septic field there. And C- CTE is replacing the greenhouse at Princeton Middle High. All right, over to ESER. Uh, lots of HVAC to improve, prove our indoor air quality and, uh, functionality of those systems. Uh, Package One started at South, South Johnston and West, West Campus, all, all the cable, um, control wires. Wires have been pulled and starting the controls and all soon. Um, Package Two and Three have been awarded and, and just getting those materials and, uh, so, and Package Seven, so hold tight, coming up, up next for award is Pak- Package Seven, which is, is an extensive overhaul, hall of the building HVAC system at Clayton Middle. So re- remember this, this picture of, of our old DOS-based control system? So this is what our, our fancy new system looks like. This is, this is for a in- individual fan cool in a single classroom. Um, you, you can see the cooling cool, the heating cool, outside air, the temperature, what's running and what's, what's not. Um, this is what one of those, um, building plans look, look like, looks like with, with the temps of each, each of the units and the spaces. And then this is a central plant pi- pitcher of chillers on the left, and, and, um, you can see what's running and what's not, and what's the pumps, the ch- uh, chilled, chilled water temp, all of that good, good stuff. So, um, around, rounding out our ESER, we are, they started this past week on the addition to Benson El- Elementary. We expect that to be done next summer for the twenty-four school year. Over at Prin- Princeton, Miss, Mr. B., rest, rest his soul, will be proud. The Princeton Middle High windows will fi- finally be re- replaced, placed on the front of that school. And some, um, single-pane win- win- windows at Micro. Boiler at Cooper that'll start soon, chillers, some more for Clayton High School. Um, and approved last, last meeting was, was those design contracts for a comprehensive HVAC project at Four Oaks and South Smithfield. Um, and then Cleve- Cleveland, next summer, we'll, um, be, be bidding and starting the piping replacement for that school. All right. So now for the twenty-twenty-two bond, uh, we do have three major proj- projects in, in that in addition to Cooper. So this, this is a rendering of, of the design of that. This is, is kind of behind Cooper, looking back towards the existing camp- campus. But on, on the right, you'll see an extension and then a two-story addition. There's a op- opposite view, view of that addition, there's two stories there. Um, this, this is a inside rendering. Um, I really like how the design team pulled, pulled in the mascots got for that, that school and the color patterns. Um, bathrooms with the sinks actually moved out towards, towards the hall so the teacher can stand, stand there and better monitor students. Um, and our next project is a ele- elementary school for the Co- Cleveland Swift Creek commu- community. Um, it will, will be a two, two, two-story school on about twenty, twenty acres of land. Um, and will house nine hundred-plus students at that school. So this is the first, first floor. On the bottom right is like a shared entrance for car, carpool, pool and buses. Everyone comes in the same place. Uh, commons area of the dining and the gym and media center. And, and, and then the orange and yellow down each, each side, down the left and the top is the col- col- classroom wings. And then, then on the second store, second floor is more, more of those classrooms for, um, two, three, and four, five grade levels. So there's a rendering of, of that school. The high school, the last, last of the twenty-two bond, um, is a, is, is planned, planned to be a three, three-story high school. Also with space, space for a future middle school. So they, they will somewhat share, share the sport, sports fields, and that all can, that all fits on roughly nine, ninety acres, uh, two thousand-plus students. And up above, you'll, you'll see is the county sewer plant. So nice, nice short tie-in, in the sewer there. And, uh, we did purchase that in the part, partnership with the county parks rec, because, because the Noose River's behind there. So there's the floor plan, the y- yellow is like the ad- admin and the entrance into the purple, which is like a commons area, dining area. Over to, towards, towards the right, the orange is the athletics. Uh, cou- cou- couple of gyms, main gym, X gym, and Al's gym, and then the blue is the fine arts wing with the au- auditorium. And then over on, on the left is your c- classroom wing. Um, and so that will be three, three, three stories. That's, that's the third, third floor of that wing that has, um, lots of classroom rooms in it. There's, there's a, 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 for all building plan for that, um, of that school. There's a interior pi- picture of what, what that commons looks, looks like with the, with the entrance at the far end, and then the gyms on, on the right, and the cafeteria kitchens on the left. Up above, above looking over is the media center. And last of all is the, um, local-funded project jacks as well, as you know, knows the ADA project that we're getting start, started on. Here's, here's a cou- couple of campus plans. North Johnston on the left and Tri- uh, yeah, Tri- Triple S on the right. Um, we did do a district-wide ele- eh, elementary and middle school gyms. We up- upgraded the lights to all, all LED, roughly Mr. Bread of one-point-two-two-year on, on average payback. Um, and one cool, cool thing coming is a, is Breeze Way safety walls, walls for those canopy connectors between, between school, between buildings. Um, in, in, interesting feature that this, this will a- actually provide is somewhat of a outdoor classroom area as, as well, where we're adding little like seating walls for outdoor space there. Um, and, and then dis- di- district-wide bottle fillers, we had a- added those, those at all schools, um, this, this past year. And a bunch of kitchen water heaters, uh, ten, ten schools, schools and all. Um, so in, in su- su- summary, lots of good, good, good things. We appreciate all, all the support and funding from the county and all, and even use, use, and some federal dollars of ESER to help a- accomplish these, these needs. But we aren't done, kind of like the, um, the school, school, school score, scores. We aren't, we aren't done. I mean, there's, there's still a lot, lot of kids, ki- kids and mobiles, and the growth has, has come, and students are here, and more, more houses are built every day. So we aren't, aren't, aren't done. Plus, plus there's, there's a lot, lot of HVAC needs, infrastructure needs, renovations and stuff to, to, to our, um, fifty-two sites. Yeah. Any questions? Which part? Yes, yeah.
With the thing for Corinth Elementary, was, was that a leach field?
It's a old, uh, like septic le- leach field and filters and filters and goes out, out to a creek.
You, you know this. I'm sure you know this answer. How many retention ponds do we have?
Oh, my. Um, so they started around two thousand. Um, I've, I've been doing, doing the reports for them. So there's, there's about twenty-five retention ponds that we maintain.
All of them out in the rule?
No, I mean, those are more, more with, with our n- n- new, newer schools. Um, I think it started Benson, kinda like Cleveland Elementary, no, 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 hang on. Um, Glendale Kinley doesn't have one, Benson does, can't, probably McGee's Crossroads was the first one, one, one around that two thousand-two time period.
Any other questions about this presentation? This is for information only. And I believe you have.
I d- I do have one actually, Madam. Yes. All right. So speaking of that Clayton Middle Controls and Equipment Upgrade Package, um, it's Pak- Package Seven of, of our ESER, uh, s- project. So this, this is, is an extensive overhaul of the building HVAC sen- sensors. So more than just the controls, this, this is equipment, air handlers, all the, the whole nine. So, um, capping it off, off with, with, um, commissioning and testing and balancing and all. So, um, so the low bid was provided by Superior Mechanical Cer- Cer- Forces of Greensboro. Um, in, in the amount of. Um in in the amount of four four million six hundred and sixty-six thousand thousand dollars. Um just gi- give given the nature of the work in that that school and the um the need for the can um balancing, commissioning and all. We are asking for a uh two hundred and fifty thousand dol- dol- dollar contingency and this is an ESTER-funded project for approval.
I'll entertain a motion, motion by Mr. Donovan, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was Mr. Johnson made the motion, Mr. Donovan the second, okay, sorry. Any discussion?
So what are are we replacing, when I'm replacing the chiller, how how old is this stuff out there, is that equipment?
Um that stuff is fairly new, I mean, I mean, in the grand 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 scheme, it it did have 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 a cooling tower. But it's chillers now, I think it was replaced right before I started around two thousand fifteen or so.
The chiller was replaced?
The chillers, mm-hmm.
I guess my now my question is if if we're doing it, I I want to make sure it lasts, Sunday, because it's when it says overhaul, I don't know, but I'm I'm not a an HVAC person. But what says an overhaul, so we're just pretty much just upgrading what's there.
No, th- this is taking out what 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 is there there and put put in a whole new system.
Okay, except for the the chiller itself and.
Except for what we call called the central plant stuff, which is chillers and boilers, the outside stuff.
Okay, and we- we you feel good about those lasting? Yeah, right, that's right. Well, no, I guess my question is if if we it is the if the funding is there with ESTER to to do what needs to be done to make sure it's in the future. I'm not I'm not questioning what you're doing, because you know what you're doing, I'm I'm just saying, if the funding was there to to get it to last, I mean.
Yeah, no, I I mean, they they were assessed by the design team, um Dewberry was doing doing this one. And and it it was was package seven, so so there's six other packages that we also had to do, so. Um but we feel comfort co- com- comfortable with what is planned for this project.
So Brooks, I mean, piggybacking off his, for someone who's very very layman with AC units, HVAC units, especially commercial ones. Would it be appropriate to ask how many years you said you think we'll get out of this, I mean, that I think that's what Terry's kind of leaning towards and that's what I'm I mean, we're talking, you know, ten years, twenty years, thirty years, what do you think?
Chillers have have a a preferred life of of about fifteen years, um now we push ours to about twenty-five years. Um which which is not ideal, um so if they were replaced around two thousand fifteen, then they're they're about halfway through through their. Ideal life expectancy.
So with this package seven, how many more years of use would you foresee, or would you estimate?
Oh, now, this this system in in inside will get you a good thirty years, yeah, yeah.
I think that's what Terry's driving at.
Um is this the uh I I'm just asking this, I'm 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 not. Que- I'm not questioning what you're asking us to do, but is this the worst school in regards to this need?
Um.
Look, I I understand we have some real HVAC needs out there.
Exactly, yeah.
And I I just want to make, you know, is this because it's not working, or I miss a lot of money, is it not work, I I don't think we need to wait till they're not working, I'm just trying to get my head around all our needs.
It's it's um it's not a singular an- answer, cause like a Four Oaks Elementary, South Smithfield. Um are up there a- along with this as well, those systems are, one, they're well past their time. Uh but then two, they don't even have have the components that new systems have, like taking out the moisture of the air, they they just. Simply cool, so that's.
You say they, who are you talking about?
The systems.
At what schools?
Four Oaks, Clayton Middle, South Smithfield, all of them, that while it 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 may show that it's seventy-four, sev- seventy-two is humid. And it's seventy-five five percent humidity, because as we live live in North North Car- Carolina where it's. Ninety-eight percent out outs out outside, so.
This is one of the schools the teachers are buying dehumidifiers, they're trying to.
Patch it.
Yeah, yeah.
Are they doing that at Clayton Middle School?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I I just know we have some great needs and I'm just trying to make sure we're prioritizing, of course, they all need it, uh and it's quite expensive.
McGee's is one one too, too, that that the internal units in in inside are just they're twenty-five five years old, they they do replace them. So and and that was was a cap capital project that funded the chillers, but but. There wasn't enough capital funds to do inside, so.
Cause I I guess my question is, Kevin, you can have me on this, because I know when Kevin and I went around to all the schools, that was we saw a lot of schools the teachers are buying. Dehumidifiers with their own money.
Yeah.
Because of that, I mean, uh do we are we on schedule to fix that?
Oh, this is a great, great start, but next year we need more more capital funds to to do Four Oaks Elementary and South Smithfield and. McGee's Crossroads Elementary and so so.
That's what I was doing, was checking my notes, because it was on there that Clayton Middle, they were buying dehumidifiers.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote for the approval of this recommendation, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise, thank you. Mr. Ventrano.
Good evening again, everyone, uh two items for you, both action items. The first are personnel recommendations, administrative recommendations from the superintendent, and I'll break those up into three categories. First, we have a principal recommendation that'll carry a two-year contract for Mr. Christian Herring. To serve as principal at Corinth Holders Elementary School.
This is an action item, I'll entertain a motion.
Sumo.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Carroll, any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, second, we have four assistant principal recommendations, these also carry a two-year contract, Ryan Casual, Riverwood Middle, Grant Johnson. At triple S, Melissa Knoll at Cleveland High, and Amy Tabor at Westview Elementary.
I will entertain a motion for approval.
Sumo.
Motion by Mr. Donovan, second by Mr. Johnson, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of this recommendation, these recommendations, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven oh.
Alright, lastly, for the personnel recommendations, we have two central administrators, first Kristen Braswell to serve as title-one coordinator. That will carry a two-year contract, and then Brian Jones to serve as executive director of student assignment and information systems.
Again, this is an action item, I'll entertain a motion, motion by Mr. Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anton, uh any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of this recommendation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Alright, second, we have proposed revisions to our two calendars, both the traditional staff calendar, which would also in turn revise the student calendar. And then the early college academy C T L A calendar. Board, as you know, August thirty-first, we made the decision to close our schools due to inclement weather. And when we created our calendars, both of these calendars had about five, uh five for the traditional, six for early college and C T L A. Days that we could bank if needed, uh meaning that we could waive those days for students, because we've already met. The requisite number of instructional hours per school year, which is a thousand twenty-five, uh we started off the school year. With our traditional calendar, about a thousand fifty-six and about a thousand sixty-two at early college and C T L A, so again. We have days to waive, what our recommendation to you is that we would waive that day, the August thirty-first day for students. You cannot waive days for staff, you have to have a two hundred and fifteen-day calendar for staff. So in order to meet general statute for creating a staff or a school calendar. On the traditional calendar, we have added a workday on June thirteenth, which will actually help us with retesting that occurs at that time. And then for early college academy C T L A, we are adding a workday on June twenty-seventh. I'm sorry, May twenty-seventh, thank you.
Okay, this is an action item, I'll entertain a motion.
Sumo.
Motion by Mr. Donovan, a second by Mr. Johnson, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of these calendar revisions, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven oh, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Um before you leave, uh I don't know how many of you uh know that Mr. Ventrano has announced his retirement as of November first?
Correct.
Is that correct?
So I have one more.
You have one more board meeting, uh but I did want to just again acknowledge that you have made that decision, um. I, you know, first time I ever met Brian Ventrano, I went into his elementary classroom at West Clayton Elementary School, is that correct? Yes, we were in graduate school, we were in graduate school together, um anyways, um we'll talk more with you and and share more with you, but um just thank you. Thank you for your hard work, look forward to having you here for a little while longer.
That's right.
Mr. Brett. You're not retiring, so.
I know, ma'am, you're sitting with me for fifteen more years, I've got a hot minute left to go, uh good evening. If you'll give me one, yeah.
And can I uh can I address? Brett, can I address one thing before you get started this, and I know we've gone on, but but uh one of our uh one of our public comments talked about charter schools, and I just wanted to uh. You're the best at explaining this about how money our local dollars are 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 shared with our charter programs, would you just see how we do that just very quickly?
Yes, so we pay uh every month uh for nine months out of the year, because it's uh the state established a nine-month payment plan uh with charter schools. Uh we pay approximately thirty-five uh different charter schools, uh so even though we don't have thirty-five charter schools that are located and housed in Johnston County. Uh the money follows the child, so if the child lives in Johnston County, uh but attends, let's say, East Wake Charter School. Uh the money follows that child and goes to East Wake in uh in Wake County. And so we pay approximately uh three thousand seven hundred and some odd total students, uh charter stu- charter school students. So how that works is whenever you see our funding request from the county, uh that funding request is not just for us, although we have the largest portion of that. Uh about ten percent of that ends up flowing uh through us from the county commissioners, through us and then to the charter schools. And so we go through a calculation and you actually see that calculation here uh later this evening on our uh our fee schedule. Uh that calculation goes in uh, you know, per student, and we divide it by nine months and then add fines and forfeiture revenue to that as well, and then that follows a child. And so every month we we pay uh based on uh what the charter schools are providing to us uh as their enrollment of Johnston County students.
So if a student returns to us from a charter school, which happens frequently, we don't continue to pay the next month, because the child's no longer on their roster, the money that we do not receive. Is the state money.
That's right.
The charter school has received the state money, we do not get a portion of that back.
That's right, and so, for example, one of, we had a charter school that we net gained, in other words, we pulled back, uh I think it was about a hundred and forty students uh during the year. Uh last year, the local funds uh followed the child back to, by local, I mean county funds, followed the uh followed the students back to Johnston County Public Schools. But uh as as you're mentioning, uh our largest funding source is the state, and so the state uh allocates that money upfront. And so once the student uh has been there for, you know, uh two months, I think it is, uh that money gets locked in to the uh to the charter school, so even though they've come back to us. We don't receive the state funding uh back, and it's a two-way street as well.
What was the amount of money that didn't come?
I don't don't.
Way of figuring it, but it was a significant portion for a hundred and forty students.
Yes, and that was just with one charter.
Well, I appreciate that, I didn't mean to throw you off track, but that that question brought to mind, you did give us a folder?
Uh, yes.
So we have that information.
Yes, so um so you've got a folder before you, the first item uh for your approval, uh it looks like this, it is the uh. It's actually a budget amendment for this uh past fiscal year, and so this actually records or is to record on our financial statements. Uh two non-cash items, and so by non-cash items, we're talking about uh two expenses that were made on our behalf. Uh but we neither received the revenue for it, nor did we cut the checks for it, the uh but we we received the economic gain for it. So the very first one is uh where the county commissioners graciously purchased uh property uh next to Thanksgiving Elementary. Uh and so they were the ones that, you know, had the financial transaction, but they uh then deeded it to Johnston County Public Schools. And so we will record that uh financial gain uh on our financial statements that you'll see uh next month. The second one uh is a sim- similar situation, it it is through the Emergency Connectivity Fund through the federal government. That's seven point whatever billion-dollar uh fund that the uh that the federal government uh established uh right after the pandemic. And so that uh we received uh, I think, a total of eight point seven million dollars worth of student devices. And so we didn't, again, we didn't write a check for it, we didn't receive the the money, uh but the Fed provided the uh devices for us. And so these are uh just two transactions that we are recording on our financial statements that you will see in depth uh next month uh during our pres- presentation.
So this is an action item?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'll entertain a motion for approval of this budget amendment.
Sumo.
Motion by Mr. Wooton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of this budget amendment, um please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, the second item I have uh looks like this, uh and those that are watching at home, if you're interested in seeing all the items that we've presented here tonight, it is attached to the agenda. Uh so when you pull up the agenda on our website, uh you'll be able to see these things that we are talking about. Uh but this next item is uh per North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C et cetera, uh all boards of education in North Carolina. Are required to approve the fees uh and charges that students pay uh or that we charge to our students uh each year. The amounts you have before you are largely unchanged from last year, uh the few changes that we do have are noted in blue uh on the right side of the uh of the page. And um and these are the maximum amounts, and so there's not necessarily mean that every school is going to charge, say, a dollar for replacing a carpool tag. You know, but it just means that this is the maximum amount that the schools have requested uh here for this uh, you know, for this current fiscal year. And so what we're going to need to look at in the future is really take a deep dive on our our student fees going forward, because as you know, and as I've talked about quite a bit. Uh we are rapidly approaching the fiscal cliff, the fiscal cliff is when all all our ESTER funds go away. And a lot of these projects that we've been talking about um are no longer funded, you know, so Brooks just came up and and spoke about ESTER funds. So we're we're spending about thirty million dollars of ESTER funds uh into HVAC projects and the Benson expansion. And so all of that goes away, so all those uh other schools that haven't, you know, we don't have ESTER funding anymore to continue those projects. You know, we we no longer have the uh the ability to sustain them, and student fees are certainly not going to replace uh HVAC systems, so we're not going to, we're not going to replace a. You know, four million dollar HVAC system at a school, but we need to really kind of look at what are the schools paying for? So what are what are we requiring the schools to use fees to cover, and then what what should they be paying for? And then what should we be paying for, and so we really need to take a deep dive uh into how schools are funded to make sure that we are fair. And providing uh, you know, coverage for for all of our schools, and so that'll be something that we're going to do kind of at the same time. As going through our new budget for our our post-fiscal cliff, because there's no no time better than the present to figure that out. But this is largely unchanged, but I say all that just to say uh this will likely look very different uh when it comes to in the spring, it'll have to change, yes.
Right, and we'll, this will need to be a, this is an action item, I'll entertain a motion.
Sumo.
A motion by Mr. Wooton, second by Mr. Donovan, now discussion. Uh this obviously has to be looked at before the end of the school year.
Yes.
Because the cliff is September twenty twenty-four.
And so uh state law requires this to be posted on our website by October fifteenth, so we usually bring it in either to September or the October board meeting, but we're going to rapidly move that up. We're gonna start here in the late, uh, winter, early spring, uh, and just tie it into our total, our total funding package, and, and re- reevaluate this whole thing.
Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of, um, the, uh, student fees, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The last item I have is just a informa- item for information, uh, polit- board, and it looks like this page here. It is, uh, Board Policy five zero one one, uh, requires or asks that all school-sponsored organizations that charge fees of greater than five hundred dollars, uh, that that information is passed along to the finance department, and then we in turn bring that, uh, to the board as information, a- and that's what this is for tonight. These are all the responses that we have received from the organizations, uh, that, that we've reached out to, uh, and these are, this is a summary of all those, uh, costs that are exceeding five hundred dollars.
Any questions? Thank you for getting, and thank you for getting all this information for us. We appreciate it so much.
My pleasure, thank you.
Dr. Pierce.
Good, good, good afternoon, or good night, or whatever, what are we saying here? Uh, I have, I have two items, um, here. The first one is school security camera updates. Um, this is, uh, it's exciting for me to bring this to y'all, but we did an RFP to upgrade all of our camera systems. Uh, based on doing the RFP, it is our recommendation that we move forward with the camera upgrades, outlining the scope of work that is on your exhibit. Uh, they came back for a total price of one thousand, thirty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and twenty-one cent, with North Carolina sign on of Goldsboro. We are requesting up to one-point-one million dollars to account for any additional cameras that we may deem that are needed to be purchased in the process, um, and this project is funded by the county commissioners, uh, and the Board of Education's safety request that we asked for last November, so that's how this will be funded. One-point-one million dollars.
It says action item, I'll, I'll enter, I'll entertain a, a motion.
Some move.
Motion by Mr. Carroll.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wooton, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the school security camera updates, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you county commissioners, and thank you Dr. Pierce.
The, uh, next item that I have for you all is, um, a request to, um, give our school nutrition assistance. We have a hundred and ninety-two of these employees in our county, of which sixty-three of those positions are vacant, which, uh, equates somewhere between thirty and forty percent of our total classified vacancies. Um, they currently are receiving a thousand dollars that was already approved just, uh, earlier, um, and so what we're requesting is that we give them the twenty-five-hundred dollars, uh, for the year, uh, retention or, and hiring bonus to try to fill those vacant positions. Um, that would be, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per month is how that would be paid out over the next ten months. And that will be funded through school nutrition, uh, funds.
This is an action item, I'll entertain a motion.
Some move.
A motion by Mr. Donovan, second by Mr. Wooton, any discussion? I will reiterate that your, it's paid out of school nutrition funds.
Yes.
Hey, uh, Dr.
Go ahead.
Sorry, uh, Dr. Pierce, this will a- also cover the nutrition managers as well?
Would be, yes, 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 sir.
I just wanna make sure.
Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Hearing or nee- having no other business before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Well, I got, let's see, I got Mr. Carroll as a motion, I got who? Mr. Wooton as a second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.